Lori. Mayor Lenahan.
Chair.
Council Page.
Chair.
Council Kendall.
Here.
Council Martinez.
Here.
Council Pitten.
Council.
Council Sheldon.
Present.
And Council Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. This evening, we have on our consent agenda the City Council regular session agenda for this evening. In addition, we have the June 17th, 2024 City Council minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that we need to be aware of? I'll entertain motion for the consent agenda.
Oh. I move for a vote to consent again.
All right. I believe that Ms. Smith is the second. Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can throw a sign name. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. So, we have several folks who want to speak on during our public comment. And I just want to remind folks that if you want to speak on anything that is on the agenda or not on the agenda, you do have to fill out a yellow card and hand it to Lori under city recorder. And I will call on you. As you came in and she saw the desk, there should be some guidelines for the public comment. There's also guidelines for public comment on the table in front of me here, by council here. I'm just going to state that you will have three minutes. Lori will keep a timer. We certainly need to be respectful in your comments and respectful of council members and the community in the building. And then, in addition, in the public comment, it's a time for comment, not debate. Nor is it a time for the public to ask questions and receive answers from council or staff. But we do reserve the right to ask staff for any available information or follow-ups. So, we do have several people that do want to speak. So, again, I want to be very confident and respectful of everyone's time this evening. And again, you will have three minutes to make those comments. Lori, how are you managing your time? Do you have a timer there?
Yeah. I know Andy gives it another way, and I'm not sure if Will's aware. So, this is, we'll be facing, okay, out that way.
Perfect. All right. All right. And so, the first person I have wishing to speak is Joanne Saptin. So, please come up to the table. Make sure you speak into the microphone. We do the Beijing system here, so it would certainly help with Lori's record keeping at the end of the day. And then, speak your ass first and last thing and address them record.
Right, Saptin. And I live at 15250 Northwest Cory Road, also known as the old Crouch-Eye Park. And I have a question, and whether anybody can answer that. I just want to bring that issue. So, it seems that the biggest issue about the urban growth boundary that was really a tripping point was that there would be industrial commercial lands on both ends of the city. I don't know what happened, how that came to be discussed, or if that was actually real. But I know that putting industrial zones, I was on an industrial planning committee in Everett as a citizen advisor. And I know that you want to group that all together. So, if you're going to do industrial land, it would make more sense for that land to all be towards West Union. And that's not just because I know Bentham, but towards West Union is closer to where the rest of industry and all infrastructure is. So, I would plead with you to please not split the industrial, heavy industrial land on two different sides of whatever growth boundary you create. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Are you staying for the rest of the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Great round.
You may be recommended a great round to read by the combined of whispering platform or planes. And if we go off, there's got a lot of topics I want to get. First, we've got a left over. As per the minutes you just adopted, the 617 24 media councillor Smith accused Aaron Nichols of North Plains smart growth, making a statement at the CCI meeting that all the UGV discussions have been behind closed doors. That's a pretty serious accusation. He said totally counter to the tone of Fred's smart growth that they've promoted since the beginning. Mr. Nichols said that he would review the tape of that CCI meeting and reply directly to councillor Smith. He did so. And for the attachment, while returning it, he mailed it to Senator Smith the next day. The tape clearly shows that Mr. Nichols was referring to the legislative adoption of House Bill 4026 as being adopted behind closed doors, not the city's UGV expansion. I listened to that tape as well, and it was very clear. We assume the councillor Smith shared that question with the rest of you? No? Just let us stand. Okay? Please include, excuse me, councillor Smith, this is my time right now, please.
Excuse me, sir. He is also elected official, and I would expect that he deserves the same respect that you do.
Then my time needs to be extended by however much he talks.
Great, I'll give you 15 extra seconds.
Okay. Please include that rebuttal, as I said, when we're in our written comments. Please include that in the minutes for this meeting. His councillor Smith's accusation was included in the minutes, we just included. And we certainly hope the representatives of the city try to be a little more active in the future in the accusations. Regarding the UGV reload, the proposed reload is a good start. It's a good start. Of course, the devil will be in the details, the way it's actually implemented. But the mid-process outreach steps to work, the improved means of public outreach, and the expansion of the path of good things, again, depending on how we're done. But there's two very significant generalized concerns. One, the proposed timeline is extremely short, particularly considering the significant amount of the July-August timeline for education and outreach has already passed. And the recommended timeline mustn't call for adoption of the process until the first August. Important pieces of underlying data, like the four-year-old projected population growth, recently has been updated. A rushed process is not going to address the concerns of 72% of voters who objected to the original expansion. Or is it going to result in a positive long-term impact on the city?
Your time's up. I gave you 15 extra seconds, I added to it.
Do you have all of that written down for each one of our council members? If not, Lori can certainly make copies.
You can make copies.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mel and Wendy Morrison.
Mel and Wendy Morrison, Mel's sitting back here. And 17845 Northwest Solberger Road, North Plains, Oregon. And Mel and I have been farming this area for 50 years, and we've been, we've employed people from North Plains, we visit North Plains, we support the businesses. I would like any look, relook at the urban growth boundary. Do you include people like us that you, what decisions you make impact our way of living, our source of income? Decisions you make, the farmer, forestry, out there impacts our force source of making a living. And if you want to question me on that, you can. I can go into detail, but please include us on anything you do, because you could put us out of business. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Any, any questions on how you would do that?
Are you staying for the rest of the evening?
Yes.
So, ma'am, over here.
Oh, where are you? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No. Later in the evening, we will be talking about next step in the process. So, if you're able to stick around for the rest of the meeting, I would suggest you do so, so you can hear the conversation that we will have.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you know that we, it's important to include us, because we could use our source of income.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Actually, Wendy, I do have one quick question for you, follow-up. What is your source of income?
We're forestry. We tree farm and we sell a lot, we sell timber.
Timber? Thank you. John Platt.
Madam Mayor, I have the copies of the testimony.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I also submitted the testimony a little earlier electronically. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. First of all, I'm John Platt. I own a foundation, we use a winery in Helvetia. And I want to start off by saying, first of all, misery loves company. You're not the only city council or county commissioner board in the United States that's dealing with exactly the same problem. I attached to my testimony an article from Washington Post on July 10 that talks about two counties in Virginia that are dealing with the problem in two different ways. One, going as much as possible hell-bent for leather to get data centers. The other one's saying, we're not going to grow at all. Now, those might be two opposite posts for decision-making, but they sort of give you some idea of where the middle ground exists as well. As a as a vineyard and winery owner, I get into North Plains about three times a week, whether it's for food, or fuel, or parts, or auto repairs, on and on and on. North Plains is a very important part of my business. And rather than being known as an outsider, I'd like to think of myself more as a stakeholder. And like many other people who farm directly around North Plains, we depend upon North Plains as part of our, for part of our business. I was very disappointed to see New Holland Tractor leave a few years ago after as more and more farmland was taken out of North Hillsboro. Now, I don't know whether or not that was the exact reason why they left, but you know that as we start losing more and more agricultural land, we'll start losing some of the services that are provided. You're about to start a new process, and I hope that you will take into account the views of stakeholders who live nearby. And give us time and give us the opportunity to participate in one way or another, however you wish to do that. But I think that it's important, just as it is in any strategic planning process, to take into account the views of stakeholders. I hope you will also take a look at that article from the Washington Post that I think does lay out some of the kinds of problems that you're dealing with as you go through this review of the UGV process itself. And I think about the National Environmental Policy Act when it first came into play, where significantly federal actions were reviewed for their environmental impacts. And one of the first mistakes that many of the litigants made in dealing with EPA was the failure to include a no-action alternative. The Washington Post article ends by saying, "To save our countryside, we're going to need a lot more leaders with the courage to think small." I add that as sort of a last note, thinking that really your decision is going to somehow or another come from no growth to management growth. And I think taking a look at it from that standpoint, various ways of development. Well, help and participate.
Thank you. Chris Edmonds.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Chris Edmonds, and I represent a group of landowners across the east side, southwest of New York, west of Jackson School Road, and north of Highway 26. Just to remind you, none of the landowners that I represent are bringing commercial food crops on their property. In fact, none of them are able to derive significant farming income of any kind in most of the outside jobs. Most are members of multi-generational Dutch farming families that settled in this region. And unfortunately, the world has changed in such a way that their land doesn't enable them to support a family. These landowners were all part of a conversation that took place more than a decade ago, resulting in a grand bargain that included strong participation with Thousand Prince. And I remember, because I was advising a county commissioner very much aligned with Thousand Prince Board throughout this process. And I remember the deal that was struck to leave these lands as undesigned. So, we very much support the deal. We knew that this was decided more than a decade ago, and we're very much in support of the work that you're continuing to do. Finally, I want to congratulate the city on ASML locating on West Hughes Road. I mean, this is a coup de grâce for the city. It's one of the most important companies in the world for economic and military security for the West. If we want to outcompete China, we need ASML here. If we want to defeat Russian aggression in Ukraine, we need ASML here, working with Intel and the NSDC. If we want Intel to thrive and continue pumping billions of dollars of trade sector income into our region, we need ASML here. And so, good job on being able to recruit such a critically important company and get them cited so quickly. Two years ago, you wisely set a course of action to pursue high-wage manufacturing, including suppliers, and to lean into the U.S. Chips Act and the work of the Oregon Semiconductor Coalition. Many people, including some in this room, testified to you that that was a fool's errand and that semiconductor companies would never come here. I heard it with my own ears, saw it with my own eyes. The ASML announcements validation that you were right, your staff were right, and good job. You deserve a lot of credit for that. So, the east side owners are in full support of the city's efforts to create a smart, well-developed plan to allow North Plains to benefit from this historic opportunity, to increase quality of life for all of its residents, and to provide new opportunities for this city to look at what it's going to become in the 24th century. We're in full support of you. We believe that you are the right decision-makers at the table. And, you know, despite the setbacks that we've had and the misinformation in our communities, we encourage you to pursue, you know, a course of action that will allow us to continue looking forward and not backward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up would be Andreas Traubner.
Hi there. Okay, I'm Andreas Traubner. I reside at 3094 Northwest Well Drive here in North Plains. And it's going to be very quick. I'm basically here today to ask the council to address this plan for engaging the community in the whole UGV discussion. It was publicly shared before. I'm with the community, and we have not seen that happen. From the outside, it looks like it's a story repeating again. You know, the community is getting very unsettled and angry about this. So, I really am here to urge you to like, start talking to us, start reaching out to us before it's too late for that to happen. Thank you.
Sir, are you staying for the rest of the meeting? If not, we will be recording, and this topic is on the agenda, where we will be talking about what our next steps are.
Awesome, thank you.
Do that. We got to start somewhere. Aaron Nichols.
Good afternoon, mayor, councillors. My name is Aaron Nichols, and I live 11,000 Northwest Jackson Cory Road, Hillsboro, Oregon, 97124. I'm addressing tonight in a matter of relook. I'm having myself, we group by office, to be corporate and smart growth.
Aaron, could you speak a little louder than the mic?
Yep, yep. As I said, since the election, our group would like to be helpful in building community trust and engagement around a new robust process. That would, and that takes a look at the UGV proposal from the very beginning and truly engages and listens to those type of statements. If this relook is a start down that path, then we're very happy to engage and provide energy and support the process. After reading the proposal, I found myself agreeing with the basic premise of Mr. Drake, that this process needs significant community engagement after the clear rejection ordinance 490. While the relook memo offers a starting place, I think real community engagement needs more time than it's outlined at this time. There's no rush here. As the DLCD has acknowledged, North Plains is not required to expand at this time. And that means we have the luxury, and that's time to do it right. Friends of North Plains Smart Growth supports a process that would start at the beginning. Mass citizens, what they want to see in North Plains in 20 years, and work from that. This process will likely take more than a year, and it needs both the time and the flexibility to be successful, trusted, and to do its job. Any plan needs to be based on good facts. One fact is that North Plains is not required to expand, and if it does, it has wide latitude and where and how much. We should agree that this relook, besides doing serious engagement, needs to look at the founding documents, such as the housing needs analysis, the latest PSU population numbers, the numbers that are the basis of the HNA, predict more than 2,000 fewer people in North Plains than previous projection. Similarly, circumstances have changed since last EOA. We need to decide if these documents are still relevant, and if so, how to adapt them to current realities. Lastly, the policy advisory committee needs not just a wide mandate to look at the facts, but also to encourage participation, but also needs to be trusted and representative. Needs to include stakeholders and include people from inside North Plains, as well as near neighbors who will be affected by the UGV expansion. Furthermore, it can't be a sitting set of folks who proposed the original ordinance. To be trusted to come up with an ordinance that can win and support the community, the fact needs to have wide representation and include many who opposed the original ordinance. While we're happy to start with this relook as a place to start a process, provided the timely mandate and representation are appropriate, we do believe what the mayor friend called for was less of a relook and more of a redo. We want to work with the city to build stronger North Plains and a ordinance that won't be rejected by a hollow measure. Thank you very much.
Can we get a copy of your report?
Yeah. Thank you.
Excuse me, next up is Mike Schertz.
Well, my name is Mike Schertz. I live at 32040 Northwest Wasco Street. I basically only have a couple of questions. Number one is we had a vote on the UGV here recently, and 72% of people voted no. So, I'm curious why? I'd like to hear from you, Ms. Lenahan. Why are we are trying to push something through that we're not required to do? Due to our population, we are not required to do a UGV. I understand it's smart growth, and that's what we need to do. And I think, like one of the other people said, that people need to be involved in that. Total transparency and communication would be nice. So, my question to you is, why are we still trying to do a UGV when we're not required to?
Planning for the future of any city. I've been in the financial industry for about 26 years, and I've helped people plan for retirement. And I know the importance of starting from saving when you're young and then being able to retire when you're in your 60s or 70s or whatnot. Or some people retire in their 50s because they started super early. So, my personal opinion is, is that we need to plan for the future. And so, when we are talking about relooking at urban growth after expansion, we're looking at it for the future, for the community down the road. This isn't going to happen overnight, but we also need to be able to say, we need to be having that conversation so that we can leave this place better than we found it and, and to include your perspective. We understand that we have new residents in this community who were not here four years ago. Okay? And they will be able to bring their perspective and their opinions and their thoughts and things like that to the community when we go through the next phase and this next process. But it's important for us, the people here, to plan ahead and not for somebody, not for folks that don't live here to come here and tell us how to do it. I've seen in my experience, in my 16 years on the city council, where developers have come into our community, and they have said, we're going to do it this way, and we're going to do a lot line adjustment over there because we can. We can do this, we can do that, or we can build here, there, and everywhere, right? And I have seen it in my 16 years of being on the city council. And I feel strongly that we get to be in the driver's seat, that we get to have that conversation. So, this isn't going to happen overnight, and we do recognize that. And I certainly know that you recognize that as well. And, but we need to plan for the future and down the road and what that looks like. And so, this is a prime time to start, I think.
I think that planning for the future is good. That is always a plus. Taking away farmland and building on top of it, this farmland needs to be preserved because we're losing our farmland at tremendous rates. I don't, I mean, we got room here to where we can expand. I think there needs to be limitations on the acreage that are expanded upon. My opinion is, we need to protect farmland at all costs. Because once it's gone, it's gone. And once we didn't, once a UGV is approved and it goes through the state, we can't go back. Then it's required, no matter what our population is. So, right now, we're requiring 10,000. We're not even close to that. We're less than half that. So, you know, we have plenty of time to do this smart, not just push it through fast and get all the other, you know, the entire community involved. The other question I have, it's not on the agenda, but I would like an answer to this, educate me. There are farmers outside the city limits that do not get a vote, correct?
They have to live within the city limits and don't have a vote.
Okay, but all of the decisions that the city council makes now, what does it take to change that to where everybody who lives in a 97133 zip code gets to vote regardless of whether they're inside or outside the city limits?
I don't have the answer for you on that. I have to get back to you.
Can you get back to me on that?
Your time's up.
Thank you for the question.
Can you get back to me on that?
Yeah, we will.
All right, I'll look for an email. Thank you.
And then, last up I have here in the hall is Denise Carey.
May I ask, pardon, is that the little tiny clock there that I can barely read?
I'll tell you when you have 15 minutes, 15 seconds left. It's already at 2:45.
Yeah, I can see that. Barely. My name is Denise Carey, and I live 3806 Northeast Lincoln Street in Hillsboro, Oregon. I'm the great, great, great granddaughter of the man who founded Glencoe in 1841. Pioneers came to Oregon to settle the land, live in the wilderness, to develop communities to Pioneers came to Oregon to settle the land, live in the wilderness, to develop communities, to grow and establish deep roots, to survive a harsh environment, and support their families and friends and all community members. Among the earliest settlers were many, many native people, and their cultural wisdom was key to survival. An important lesson and way of making decisions applies here today as well. For major decisions such as ordinance 290 that would affect their tribe for many generations, the elders will consider the impact of their decision for 100 years. The elders listened to everyone's ideas. The elders considered the benefits and detriments of everyone's ideas. The elders discussed how these benefits and detriments would impact their people over the next 100 years. This is how they made solid, sure to succeed, agreeable to all decisions. They listened to everyone's ideas without bias for or against any idea, then formed a consensus. Key word there, consensus. Native people knew that for biggest decisions, they had to get it right from the start. They knew that after they set their course on the decisions they made, that it would be very, very difficult to change the direction they had decided to go. I believe this is the same approach that the city of North Plains should take, must take, to make decisions about the surrounding land to build a future where all people can live, prosper, and be harmonious. Look at the great chance you have to develop a true master city plan, one that might set precedence and satisfy all. This is your chance to really make a name for your city and for your role at this time when big outside interests are so powerful, wealthy, and influential. Remember that your decision will impact the people with the most to gain and with the most to lose. An honest assessment for the short and long term impacts on all your residents will yield a prosperous and happy future for everyone, young, old, wealthy, and not so wealthy. I implore you to do the right thing. I implore you to take the time and not be in a hurry. I implore you to listen to everyone who will be affected by your long-term decision. There is no legitimate rush. You have the time to take this master plan for North Plains right. You can start today. As our native ancestors would consider the impact on many generations to come, I urge you to follow suit. Please consider the next 100 years and decide what is best for all, not for just a few. Thank you.
Do we have, can we have a copy of the remarks?
I just left there already.
You did, thank you.
Yes.
Laurie, is there anyone online that we need to recognize?
Nobody has their hand raised.
As chance, anyone else here in this room would like to speak during this time, during our deliberations on the agenda item? I will not be taking questions from the audience, so this is your time to speak if you need to. Greg Brown?
Thank you, ma'am. The 20 seconds of indulgence. As I would say, good reset plan, which you're missing one thing upfront. Ask the people of North Plains what they want to see their city become. Ask who runs the place, the citizens. Ask them what they want their city to be, rather than trying to tell them what it should be.
And also for the record, in the past, in the last four years during the process that we went through the UGB expansion, we did have over 20-plus public meetings. And so I know you're rolling your eyes at me, you could go right ahead.
I'm agreeing with you.
But, but we are trying our best to inform our public via email, social media. Everyone, that gets a water bill, they get a newsletter, you know. We have meetings, we have meetings over the years, and nobody's in the room. They show up and they want to complain about a tree or something, but they don't want to have a serious conversation about this. So we're in a conundrum, Mr. Brown, and I know you know what I'm saying and what I mean by that. But then I appreciate you being here and everyone else in the room being here. And the majority of the folks that spoke this evening, I'm just going to say, you don't live in the city limits, but I appreciate you verbalizing and giving us your feedback. If I had 25 people in this room that were my actual constituents, I probably would give them a standing ovation. It would be amazing to have 25 people in this room that live within the city limits, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for showing up. Yay. Thank you. I really appreciate that. But, and this is great. This is great, okay? Do you want to speak?
This is not a shouting match. This is not a shout.
Is getting, getting all. I've been doing this sort of stuff for 50 years. I hear you loud and clear. But the trick is getting their attention.
We got them.
You've got their attention.
We got it.
72% gave you an opinion.
Yeah.
Use that opportunity. They will turn out if you publicize it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, that's what we're here for. And that looks like I have someone else. And ma'am, I know you want to say something, but you'll have to go over there and fill out a card, okay? That's how we work, that helps us. No, it's totally fine, it's totally fine, but you have to fill out a card. Forgive me, Matthew, I cannot read your last name, so you'll have to maybe help me out with that. And if you could spell it just so that Laurie has your correct spelling, that would be awesome. I'm ready.
Yeah, so Matthew, spell S-Z-T-E-L-L-D. I live at 2390 Northeast Ashland, Hillsborough, technically I'm an outsider.
Need to pull it up towards you a little bit more.
You just don't live in the city of North Plains, okay?
Yeah, I don't yet. Well, so I do buy my produce from a local farmer, right? So again, I know there's some farms don't do local, like, commercial, whatever. But I buy it from a local farmer. He's a Aaron Nichols, so he leads in Friends of North Plains, so I'm in line with that. I buy milk and dairy from local farmers, right? So, yeah. There are farms that produce commercials and all kinds of stuff. So I'm okay on Fannin Farms, I'm also a person, so I believe in growth, with this smart growth over time. And I'm aligned with Friends of North Plains, I think you have everybody's passion, so the good news is grow with them, right? Fine with what their intent is, right? You have a lot of people that input, you have a lot of people attending, which is great. I gave testimony in Hillsborough a few weeks back, and there was like nobody testifying.
Did you need to start serving food or something?
Well, I think, well, in my case, I didn't actually go to the campaign until before we talked. But anyways, the point is, the reality is, I want to see growth. I just don't like seeing all the farmers. I've grown up on farms where I came from in the west. I love to see the farms locally, I'd probably buy more locally if there were farms that actually grew stuff that I was interested in. Some of that. But the reality is, I also want to see growth, where there's good jobs, not decay, you know, kind of like downtown Hillsborough, there's not much growth. So I want to see, but the thing is, it's easy to build tough like those which are pretty not necessarily productive. And so I don't want to see a bunch of land get put in the use that then becomes something that's not terribly productive. Looking at the timelines that were sent, it doesn't look like there's a lot of time for a lot of input. So the question, assuming a lot of people are thinking something similar, is there enough time to really think through a 20-year plan? If you want, my suggestion is probably not. I've done a lot of lobbying, I've got too much finance, but others type of lobbying, at last, 10, 15, cops, whatever. So the long story short is, please work with the city presidents, they clearly are, have their attention now.
Thank you for your time. Next up, Darcy Schultman.
I'm at 9760 Northwest 316th Place, Hillsborough, Oregon, 7124. So I wasn't planning on speaking, but as I heard like one of the gentlemen asking about why didn't 97133 get to vote, but I'm 97124, just across the highway, and my property would potentially be rezoned. Well, or, you know, it's trying to be. My question is, the only reason I was aware that anything was happening was because Facebook, we weren't properly notified, which I know North Plains got in trouble for at one point. Going forward, how are we going to be notified as changes happen? I know I don't have a utility bill, so I don't have my information. I, you know, don't, I'm trying to think of other, you know, resources, but most of my neighbors are elderly, and they had no clue for six months what was even happening. So that would be one question, is how are we going to be properly notified moving forward? And then the second question I have is, still trying to understand why some of the property was excluded on the south side of the highway because of the airstrip. Although some of my neighbors are part of the airstrip, so I'm just kind of still confused why just our 316th Road and the Seadmill property, the only part on that side of the highway that was being looked at. And why, why, you know, my neighbors that are part of the airstrip on my road, their properties are okay to be, you know, pulled into the urban growth area. So those are coming two questions, if that makes sense.
No, great questions, and I've noted them and will hopefully be able to address them. I know that we have addressed these questions over the years. Specifically, the airstrip is, and I don't want to dive into the weeds of it, but we will make sure that you get an answer to those questions. But that property was part of the conversation from the very beginning, and it was, it actually had to be the first one of the first plans to look at. And they actually, I'm going to defer to Bill, and maybe Bill, can you give us a 30-second or a one-minute response on why the airstrip area is not included?
Sure, it's a very good question, so.
Yeah, and just to clarify, because I don't want to waste your time. I'm aware of why the airstrip property is not, but I have two properties on my road that are part of the airstrip, that fly their planes out every day, so I'm just wondering why their two properties are not excluded. You know, if we're talking about the airstrip, you know, literally the planes fly over my house. So it's like, how come all the way down Gordon, they're okay to be excluded, but the two properties on my road are not?
All very big questions. The not get too much into the weeds answer is that we worked with Department of Land Conservation and Development to identify, given the airport overlays that those properties have around the airstrip and the ability to reserve right to have access to the airstrip and build and own aircraft, that sort of thing. The state agency identified with us that there were certain properties around the airstrip that couldn't and shouldn't be called future capacity for growth, for redevelopment, as it were, because of the airstrip relationship. So they worked with us on the line of what properties shouldn't be considered based on those criteria and what properties could be, and that was the process we went through.
Okay. Thank you. And if you have any additional questions, Darcy, technical in nature, as far as that's concerned, Bill would be the expert. So you can certainly reach out to him if that works for you, okay? Anyone, actually. I want to say, is this Carrie Davenport?
Yes.
Is that your last name? All right, awesome, thank you.
My name is Carrie Davenport, and I live on the Cape Creek Court in North Plains. This is my first meeting, and I've never been into politics, I've lived here for almost 23 years. But I raised my hand when you said, we're not going to be taking questions if you ended there anything else, because I did not plan on speaking. But when I found out there was no other opportunity, and I wanted to quickly, as part of my, I did see people raise their hands, when you said if I had 25 of my constituents here, maybe I would take into consideration. So how many people here are in North Plains, just because we didn't speak, doesn't mean we're not under representing, because it was important. So they're raising hands, is there at least 25 here?
No, but a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot, no, it's great.
So I wanted, that's why I raised my hand, because you were making it clear that we don't have our constituents here, but we are here. Just because it's my first meeting and I did not plan on speaking, but I have a lot of concerns about this. And I, for one, actually work at Intel. And I moved here almost 23 years ago to live in a small community that I was very proud of and that I planned on living here forever. And I feel like this urban growth boundary, which is why it drew me here, has created such a divide in this town to the point where I'm not even excited to go to the Urban Festival this year, because I feel like our town is so divided over politics and the sneaky, and this is my opinion, I'm against it, the things that weren't announced properly, probably because I'm not into politics typically, but I follow some of my information from Facebook as well. And I think just because there's not all of us speaking up, I assume you don't usually have as many people at these meetings.
No.
Okay, so that in itself, when I walked in here and saw this crowd, should be a loud statement. My point is that, like I said, I was never into, knew what was going on and never cared to come, but it does impact me. I live on the Capitol Hill Court, and I, myself, feel like in my little oasis of the yard, feels like I'm living on a freeway now. Already, there's so much traffic that I can't even sit outside and be on a phone call, or when I work from home, I can't even be on my patio, because it's so loud. Pulling out of the McDonald's parking lot, there's so much traffic, you have to sit there forever. And I feel like a lot of this, by one point, I don't want to get my whole day out of time. We are, I keep hearing, we want to have jobs and things for people here, but I work seven minutes away, Hillsborough, I shop 10 minutes away, I work seven minutes away. I, if people move here, this, you're saying that people who've lived here in the last four years may want to have an opinion, that those people that have moved here, moved here when it had already grown, what about us that have been here and want to stay here? And we want to see it stay small, I moved to a small town on purpose. I don't think we need to have employment in grocery stores, all these things, because we have a within convenience of us. And people who have moved here in the last four years had a choice knowing that it was a small town. And so I don't think we need to accommodate, like, oh, I moved here, now I want this. I want to also consider the people who have been here and who have been proud for this to be their home. And that's basically, I didn't plan on speaking, but you said you were going to have questions, I wanted to.
No, I really appreciate that, I think that, no, I do.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you for coming, and I certainly hope that you come to more meetings.
I will.
Laurie Pearl.
Sorry, Pearl, and I think that 1075 Northwest Glencoe Road, right here in North Plains. I grew up on a family farm, Pro Farm, which is just two miles away from here. I'm very young, I have a small plot on my family farm, so I'm definitely impacted by the UGB expansion. I'm a little perplexed why we're here, that's, it's less than two months after the, after the vote, that 72% of the people opposed the UGB expansion. It just seems, I just want to echo what the lady before we said, that there's, there's a, we need to have the city united first. That seems to be the main goal, that this UGB expansion is not a unifying topic at all. If 72% of people, almost 75% of people opposed the expansion, it's, obviously, there's, there needs to be some unifying activities or something. And yes, maybe that's your goal, but when, when you have six weeks in order to come up with a plan, that's impossible. And who's the driving force behind this? It's money, right? I mean, that's the driving force of why, why it has to happen in six weeks. It just, it just is not, is not logical. I think we are, to me, it seems like if you could just step back and use these next few months that you're here in leadership to, to unite us, to get ready for a UGB expansion that all of us can come in agreement to. I think, that'll, that would be the best way you could use these next few months before.
There are no term limits, just for the record.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, there's no term limits in the city, for, I don't know, city council or the mayor position. I'm sure a lot of people think there are other city term limits, so.
While she's doing that, can I ask her a question?
We're going to let her speak first, everyone gets a chance to speak first. Thank you.
All right, my name is Allison Brand, and I live in the city of North Plains. I live at 10980 Northwest Candy Place. Alright, my name is Allison Brandon. I live in the city of North Plains. I live at one zero nine eight zero Northwest County Place. Like others here, I was not planning on speaking tonight. I did submit written testimony, because that tends to be more my vibe. I'm a teacher, I'm very comfortable in front of kids, but adults is a different story. But I bought my home here in North Plains twelve months ago, and as a twenty-four-year-old, I was really excited about living in a small town that was connected to their community and seemed to have a very good pulse on what the community wanted, right? My mom had a good friend who lived here. She since passed away, told the guard miles. Um, and from the conversations I had with her, it sounded like North Plains really was this great community to be a part of. And I think for many years, we hit the mark. And I do feel, and it could be some of my fault as well, but I feel like what was communicated about the urban growth boundary expansion, um, was maybe not as great as communicating the gravity of it. And so my, I didn't, I wasn't really aware of the conversations that were taking place, and I should have been more involved, and that's on me. Um, however, as things developed, we learned a lot more through the election process or through the referendum process. And I think now you have everyone's attention, right? I think the vote made it very clear that people have an opinion, and I think this is a great opportunity to work together and unite the city and really see what people want. Um, because again, people weren't necessarily aware. I don't think people expressed their opinion, but now we know people have an opinion, okay? So I think this is a great opportunity to sit down with the community again, maybe think in creative ways about how to engage residents who have been here a long time, people who moved in four years ago, six months ago. I think everybody has lots of valuable things to say that live in North Plains, that also people who live in the broader community that would be impacted by the decisions that we make. So, um, I, I would urge you to really take into consideration a broad variety of perspectives and not just seek out the opinions of people that align with your own.
Thank you very much. Um, before I give, was Mr. Schurts?
Yes.
All right, before I give him another chance to ask one more question, anyone else, um, in the room? Okay, um, you're going to take us out. Mr. Schurts, come on back up.
I'll make it real quick. Uh, I heard you talking about trying to get out to the community. And you said something about utility bills. So do you advertise on the utility bill that you're having a meeting and what's on the agenda?
We have a newsletter that goes, each person who has a, uh, a water bill receives a water bill, um, in the mail. They get a newsletter, a paper copy newsletter in that same bill. Have you received, uh?
I do, but I do my water bill online, like I think a lot of people do. So I never open it. I throw away because I put it all online.
Alright.
My next question is, if, um, now, I'm on, I got on the list with Lori to be emailed about city meetings, so if you have emails of all your constituents, the people who live in North Plains, would you send out an email to everybody to let them know for future meetings and what's on the agenda?
So I do believe, like Lori, you can answer.
I can answer. So we have a list serve. You have requests on that. We can't, I can't keep track of every resident and their email address to send out. You can find every city meeting and every agenda and all the minutes and the recordings on the city's website, on the calendar. It's all on there, and you can also look up at the top under each um, their city council, and then under each city board or commission, they have their own page. You click on that, and you're able to see their upcoming meetings, all the agendas, all the minutes, a link to the recordings. The city has a YouTube channel where you can watch the recordings of every city meeting that is held. Um, so we, it's put out in the newsletter, it's put on the website, it's put on Facebook. Um, every time we have a meeting.
Don't forget about the app.
And we have an app, the city has an app. And we have an, yeah, and the newsletter that you can get electronically. You can always get or find the full newsletter on the city website as well. And it has a calendar that, the newsletter has a calendar that lists all the city meetings. Now, it doesn't list what the topics are, because we don't know, when I create the newsletter, the tenth of the month, we don't know what topics are going to be.
But when you sent me an email, you did give me that information, so I did get that information. But my question to you is if everybody gave you their email address, would you send out a blank email for each meeting to let people?
No, if they request to get on the list serve like you did, I can add them, and then it automatically sends them. But I can't, I can't do a, a mass email to sixteen hundred residents. They have to request it and provide me with the email address that they want it sent to, and I know I'm going to get bombarded now.
You are. My question, okay, so is there a form that somebody fills out? And can I get a copy of that?
There's not a form. You just email, you, me. Info, you'd need email info, that's the easiest way, because I'm not going to tell you how to spell my name, because it's long.
Okay, Brian, I'll get that email, because I will go door to door in the next few weeks, and I'll have everybody send that to you and get that requested, so that everybody knows. I will take my time, and I will go to every resident within the city limits, and I will go to farmers too. I will take my time. I'm a business owner. I'm really busy, but I'll do it in the evenings. As long as everybody gets the request, that they know what's going on.
If they request it, they get put on the list serve.
Okay.
And just, and just so that you know and everybody else in this room knows, if you have any questions, most of us are really accessible. But more importantly, you can email info@northplains.gov. Info, I N F O, at northplains.gov. And people in the city, the city staff will reply. Now, if you, I just, I need you also to be patient, um, because we don't have a large staff. And so if you don't get a response back in twenty-four hours, just, just know that someone has read it. But just give them time to respond. I know, because sometimes we get an idea in our head and we like, oh, we want an answer right now, right? But we also have to be mindful, and you're a business owner, you have to get mindful that city staff is also super busy.
That is true. I mean, I was on.
I just want to make sure that that is clear, and people in line here, and people in the room here, all right?
No, and that's understandable. I mean, there's a lot of us here, so.
Emailers, forty-eight hundred people. So, um,
is everybody, each individual of yours emails on there so that we can direct an email?
It's on the city website.
It's on the city website.
On the city website?
On the city website.
It's on the front page of the newsletter. It's on.
First name, dot our last name, at northplains.gov.
Alright.
But everything is on the website.
Until I got involved, I never knew when meetings were, and so I started looking for it. And, and I think if more people knew when they were, they just don't, you know. I'm sure, do what I did.
Yeah.
But I think if more people knew what was going on, you would have to get to your vote.
You want to pay for it?
Nope.
That might be a problem.
Okay, we'll do it outside, under a tent. I'll provide.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks for the questions. Thanks for the comments. Uh, we do have a full agenda. It's eight o'clock, and I do want to move forward. Uh, tonight is our staff night, um, where we get to hear from each staff member and, uh, be updated. Um, just one more time, just want to make sure there's no additional comments that I've missed. Okay, um, first up, this is Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. One of your busy staff here, uh, Robert Doty, Library Director. Today, a stakeholder survey opened in the W C C L S Funding and Governance Project. Um, this survey is specifically for our elected audience. Uh, City Council, Library Board, and Friends Board, Foundation Board, if we had one. Um, so this is for you all to, it's your first opportunity to give your direct feedback about this project. Uh, it opened today. In my report, it said it closed on August eighteenth. That, that was incorrect. That was the, um, uh, preliminary information, actually closes on July twenty-eighth, so it's open in two weeks. So, um, I just want to make sure I send you all the link to the survey today. Uh, and also a link to a new webpage that W C C L S uh, published that has in-depth information about this project. Um, so please do read through that unpublished webpage, um, in conjunction with filling out the survey. And tomorrow, I'm attending a marketing and communications W C C L S meeting, uh, where they're going to go through the survey with us. So I will have some more context after that meeting tomorrow morning in Hillsborough. Um, please feel free to call me or set up a meeting with me if you have any questions about filling it out. Be happy to meet with you. Um, and then I just want to say how happy we are to have Mo Neefbaum on, uh, as our, as our seasonal library program assistant. She is a teacher, she's, she is going to be a first grade teacher at Alphaoli Bridge next year. She is a cheerful, industrious addition to our staff. We're very happy to have her. Um, and I want to acknowledge and thank the Knights of Pithias for, for awesome bikes that we will be able to offer as prizes for our spin and win for summer reading. Um, really fantastic bikes, and, um, that is coming up the last week of, at the end of this month. And then finally, this Saturday, uh, local songwriter and performer Natalia uh, will be performing here in Jessamies as one of our summer reading performances. That's a, uh, bilingual musical performance. And, and so, please attend if you can.
I just want to confirm that that survey is available to the council until July twenty-eighth, correct?
It is not. Oh, yes, it is. July twenty-eighth, it's open until July twenty.
It is open until July twenty-eighth, in two weeks. Two weeks, yeah. Counselor Page.
Excuse me, wow. I haven't been talking for a while, so my voice is kind of loud. Right? But I got this. Um, we have a lot of people actually in the room that live in North Plains. There is an opening for the Library Board, is there not?
There is.
Are those in North Plains?
Yes, there isn't.
This would be a great opportunity for somebody to get involved as volunteer in our city.
Yes, sir.
Our city is run by volunteers, so everything works, to the left or right of you, we all work. Plus, we also care about the city and how it gives us running. The Library Board is a very great place to start. It's not a very heavy lift. They talk about boats, which is fun.
We try to have fun, we try to have snacks, but it's also available on Zoom.
It's the best in the night.
Oh.
So guys, uh, guys want to participate.
We do have an opening for inside the city limit, just open. The application's on the website, or you can stop by and I can do the one.
She's located really, that looks much like the library.
Thank you. Counselor Page.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I don't have much to add, uh, except in my staff report that's already submitted to you. Uh, just wanted to go over a couple of quick things, though, that I did include. Um, National Night Out, we're scheduled that beginning, um, of the previously, previously discussed here, Jessamies, Thursday, August first, from six to eight P M. We'll be here with a, a lot of cool law enforcement, public safety, public works, and, uh, public items on display, so encourage everybody to be in attendance, be, uh, putting on some hot dogs and having a good time. Uh, so it's a good chance for everybody to come down, gather, meet, greet, and, and visit with us that are, uh, in the public safety sector. Uh, also to note, just so you are aware, in the next month or so, both Debbie Barrows, Debbie Shuts, come with some extended summer vacations coming. So in this space, seeing some new faces in town, be filling in for them while they're gone, uh, enjoying themselves. I included the quarter two stats. I want you to get a chance to take a look at those at all. Um, but call volume, uh, for quarter two over the last couple of years has gone up. Um, and those stats are included on the pages two and pages three in my staff report. I presented a breakdown of call volume by hour over that, uh, quarter, as well as call volume by day. And then just a simple, uh, North Plains point map on the last page, just showing you just generic property crime, nondescript crimes there. Same old vote we've been dealing with the last three months. So to that, I'll take questions.
Counselor Page, and then Counselor Page.
Thank you for the heat map. I really appreciate looking at those and trying to figure out where I think you're happy. Looks like you have read the quotes, so. Uh, the Fourth of July was the past. Anything interesting for that and there, any kind of challenges you had?
Well, the, nothing out of the ordinary. I mean, countywide, uh, nothing unique to North Plains, countywide, indicated fireworks calls, just like through here in the city. Um, and then just standard protocol for responding to those, uh, for the WACAT dispatch protocol and countywide fire response protocol, uh, but nothing out of the ordinary that we don't experience year to year.
And second part, the Garden Festival's coming up, and in the summertime, the Knights tend to last market. And there's the alcohol and drinking and a lot of people. Just giving you some forewarning that we need some special pay for that.
Yes, we are well in the planning phases of the Garden Festival, preparing to have a, a proper police presence like in years past.
I apologize, I'm feeling a little under the weather. I also wanted to ask, um, thank you for the heat map, and I can see to, uh, steer clear of the streets on Mondays, based on the data. Um, I did want to just get a quick update, if you have one, to provide regarding the property outside of North Plains proper, on Victory Lane, that I had brought up during last month's meeting, um, regarding the multiple noise violations.
Yeah.
Do you have any update, um, maybe in the camera show, on what's being done since it's affected residents with the North Plains?
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not. I have not heard of any, it was last, of course, the last month, uh, kind of repeat events. Uh, like we talked about last month, I believe it was, it's, it's an ongoing, uh, basically code enforcement concern. The county is working on addressing through kind of various channels. I don't have any specific enforcement follow-up on that property, but I'm happy to follow up and see if there has been any action.
Yeah, that'd be great, maybe just, uh, add next, next month's council and report out.
Absolutely.
You should talk to, uh, Chief Jones.
The, the owner of the property, you have a man in that company, so.
You should have an honor.
Yes, yes.
Um, any other counselors have questions or comments for Chief Jones?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Public Works tested.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to do a shameless plug right here, since I've got such a captive audience behind me and online. Um, I've been here a little bit over a year, um, and one of the things that I have identified in that first year, um, was communication. So one of the big things I've been doing is updating the webpage as much as I can with information for the public. And I want to stress that if you have a question about public works, please contact me. Um, sometimes Facebook is not, does not have the most accurate answers, and you can come to me with your questions. And I will try my best to add to like a frequent answer questions page. Um, I'm trying to add documents about future public projects. Um, I have a lot online right now, but I have a lot to go. And that's something that I've been working hard to work with the community, is with communication and what is going on on the side of, of public works. Now, with public works, um, whether the city grows or it stays the same, my responsibility is to maintain and upgrade the infrastructure that we already have. And so, um, with that, I have to make a lot of plans for the future. We were supposed to have a, uh, working session a little bit earlier today, but some things, uh, schedule conflicts and, uh, other items that came up that required my attention before that. Um, and we'll kind of work through some of those things, and you can ask me some questions, maybe if you had about the working session. And some of them were going to be about the resolutions that I have that are coming up later as well. Um, but all of that is for anticipated, um, needs of the Public Works Department and some things that, um, are very much needed for our small department that we have right now. Meanwhile, back to everybody who's behind me, please contact me. Meanwhile, back to everybody who's behind me, please contact me. There is a report online page, like a if you have any comments or questions or issues that come up, please go to that webpage or you can email directly. And I'll get to you as quickly as I can. Sometimes it might be a couple of days. I do have a busy schedule and a small group. So I just wanted to mention this public that. As far as the report that I had, I don't have anything to add other than it's gonna be more of a resolution. If you had any questions about those items coming up, I think that would be a great time to ask me between me and Bill, because I know some of it's more financial too. Hopefully I'll be able to answer your questions as much as I can.
Councilor Smith?
Yes, I just had one. Resident who's complained two years in a row about the garlic festival and parking. Have you addressed that yet before that happens again? I think it's the signs in her front people are parking.
One of the things I've been working in the past year, and I was ranting last year today, trying to, none of this works overnight. Sometimes we're gonna have to tweak traffic control plans as they come. I've been working with a specific contractor who does traffic control plans. I used to be ATSSA certified. I have no honors that certification that can make those plans. So I have to hire out a company to actually make sure that we are doing the right job, or at least we have the signage or all that. There are some signs that we can't do. There's some signs we probably should do, but we kind of look at the needs and we look at the right of way. And overall, it is a public right of way and we need to also get out to the public that do not block people's driveways, do not park in people's yards. Garlic festival is a known event for many, many years and just be, please be considerate of others. And the public right of way, after all, is public right of way, but we'll try to make as many combinations as we can. And with that, I will be working with a particular company with a traffic control plan that is written out and that we will follow to the best of our ability. And things change. That's something that we're working on.
So have you talked to this specific person?
Not since the, one of the emails that I had from last year.
Yes, it'd probably be great just to get ahold of, see what their complaints were, see if it would satisfy.
Councilor Page and then Councilor Page.
I wanted to second what Ricky just said there, yeah. We deal with our record twice for asking about this. A reach out would be absolutely great and let her know what we're working with. Just to say, hey, we hired some, you know, we already know that this is didn't reach him out, would be awesome for her.
Steve, Justin, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know you're working with a pretty limited crew and thank you for everything that you do. My question was, are you familiar with the personal plant? Does it season at Sunset Ridge? It's on the valley. It's right across from the Sunset Ridge Park.
The one that's right there on West Union Road?
Correct.
That would be more, I don't have anything really to do with that particular property that might be more of a planning question, what's going on there?
My question, the question was really, have we been in contact? Has the city been in contact with that weed? No, regarding noxious weeds, looks like it's approaching heat tall and just thinking about. Well, very season, next year, we're gonna have some pretty crazy, crazy climate weather potentials. And I wanted to just see if you started the dialogue. Maybe this is a question for Steve that I write up there. A couple spots within the city that maybe we can pass along to.
As far as the noxious weeds, we do not have an active code enforcement program, because we're just so limited on staff. So we are pretty much limited to people sitting in their car lanes to us and then we do any follow-up with the property owner. Maybe if we had a good enforcement staff, you know, sometime in the future, we can get on top of some of these issues. But I know that we have properties, like the property that comes right up to town off of Glencoe and US Highway 26. We have our interest signed up there, but that's a vacant property right there that we're constantly trying to contact the owner of to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Sometimes they do not respond and we can't evade if we need to, but we need to give them time to be able to do it themselves. That takes a lot of staff and manpower to be able to do that kind of code enforcement and we have a full schedule. We'll do what we can as we can when we get to it.
Okay, perfect. And so should I reemail you about that specific person or is it not on the radar already?
Oh, this would be a great one for the report issue page.
Okay, I was just gonna bring that up.
Yeah, if you do that, like anybody, saying that if anybody sees any comments on Facebook, please alert people and leave them to that page. And that will help treat this thing. And that way, we can get these issues resolved and, you know, kind of triaged in a really orderly manner, so to speak.
And folks can find that on the public books, that they go to the, they go to the website and go to departments, public works departments, scroll down and online services says, report a problem.
You can also, if you go to the very top of the webpage, you're gonna have to go to the webpage. If you go to the how do I tab at the very top, report an issue spot right there. So it's a little bit quicker to get to.
Got it, thank you. I just learned that this last week. So, any other questions for Justin? Councilor Sean?
I have one question and it's maybe not a question, but a comment that's where it goes to water quality report for 2023. This is the first, I think, I've ever seen a report for Nerplains ever. So kudos for that. So, and I presume, or presumably, will continue with this on an annual basis.
Well, it was supposed to be an annual report that was done, that has gone out with, you know, for the water, but for, with your water bill every, every year. It's supposed to happen.
It's, it's always been on the website and he's posted it at all the posted places where we post agendas and that kind of stuff. I don't think it's ever been included in an agenda packet. I asked Dustin if I could add it, and we agreed that that made sense. So going forward, whenever we get one, it will be included in a staff report for that month. So you don't have to go down to the post office and read it all, which is where.
And it's also available online as well.
Yes.
So that's part of the communication.
Yes.
Thank you, Lord.
And my only other comment in relation to the resolutions that this may fall in Bill's wheelhouse. And that's just that with, when I look at, when we're adding folks, I'm not opposed to that. I know we need to do it. I think we've had some prior discussions about the, some of the the need for the expeditious nature of getting some of those folks up and in repositioned. So one of my thoughts was, one thing I'd like to see in that report is not just the arrangement salary, but I want some sort of statement as to what the cost of the burden is. So I got my mind wrapped around what the full cost of making that commitment is or that decision is. And I'm not sure that I really need that tonight. I have an idea what that is. I can make that gross calculation to figure that out. But I still think that's something that I prefer to see is the full burden, not just what an hour of the impact might be.
Correct. For the positions that are in the resolution, they already have those benefits in place. And for the future positions, that's something that we can discuss as the additional positions. We still have the same amount of personnel. They still have the same benefits. We're just kind of switching their titles and kind of promoting them a little bit. But in the future, that could be a discussion and we can include that for future positions.
Yeah, and that works. And I realize that those folks, both are both currently employed with us or being promoted, so. Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. I know that you're working your tail off and your crews as well and especially in the summer. So thank you for all you do. All right, Steve and Rowan.
Evening, Mayor and City Councilors. Thank you, Steve Rowan, County Manager of the City.
Into the mic, please.
Before I did my staff report.
Closer.
Closer. Want to make sure you can hear me. Before I did go on, I just want to echo something that Dustin said, which is, we don't always have this type of audience, so it's probably a good time to say some things. If you do have questions, planning related questions, please don't hesitate reaching out to myself as the planning manager for the city. I'm happy to work with you and help you with any questions that you have. And sometimes the most expeditious way to get answers is to just go directly to staff. So I just want to share that and I appreciate Dustin raising that as well. I'll go through a few things and then I got a couple additions to the staff report, because this information wasn't available at the time of the report out. So going over the first one, as you well know, we've had an application for marijuana dispensary in the city. We held a hearing on June 10th on that application and that, that hearing was continued until, excuse me, until July 10th. But that hearing was really just for the planning commission to deliberate on the information that had come in during, that continued hearing timeframe. They deliberated on that and they determined that they would deny that application based on the fact that the adoption ordinances did not provide sufficient clarity on how some of the buckers should be measured. So that was the basis for their denial. And we're working on getting that staff report notice of decision assembled and I believe we'll have it signed by the vice chair tomorrow and mailed out. So that will send in motion the 14 day appeal period. And I have not heard anything from the applicant's attorney as far as what they're thinking at this point. So that's kind of the closure, right, we have right now on that, but there could be an appeal that would bring it forward. We are still hearing from Greenlight Developments. That is the group that's interested in the Brink Hill two acre property. They appear to be gearing up for a neighborhood meeting at this point. So we have heard from some of the residents in Brink Hill. They have come down and chatted with me about what all this means and who is Greenlight and what is the proposal. And I told them what I knew, but I said you should attend the neighborhood meeting. That's where, you know, any revisions to the plans I have not seen will be shared with the public. So I think that project is still moving its way forward, so I'll update you on that. As far as the one acre site in Sunset Ridge where Ira was looking at that property, I've not heard from them in a while now. So I'm not sure what their plans are, but they've not been reaching out to the city with questions the way Greenlight has been doing it. So I'm not quite sure where they're at in their decision-making processes. One thing I want to bring to your attention is, we've been getting a lot of requests or been brought for attention, a lot of different special events that are happening. And we don't really have a process for that. And so there is some concern at the staff level about trying to get a better process in place for special events. Some of the special events that we've seen are, you know, things that the city's participated in. You know, some, you know, obviously bike and social, that's a little bit different, but some parades, things of that nature. And then we also have a lot of special events that are occurring on private property. One in particular is the strip mall over off of Glencoe, where you have Kennedy's Pizza at the bank and Pete Cover Patrick and so forth. Super excited that Pete likes to put on a lot of special events, but there are some concerns that the city has when they do that, because they are closing down their parking lot and altering the circulation patterns of the parking lot and where people can park. And we're not sure of the impact on the businesses there. And we also have concerns from a wildlife safety standpoint, if something did happen there. Can we get everybody into the site and manage it the way we need to be managed? So we've been going through and looking at different jurisdictions, what they do to manage special events. And what we found is, Estacada has a very comprehensive special event forum. And we really like it. We think it's a model that we could probably use. The city of Lala also has a special event document that, that, you know, I think between the two, we might be able to start working towards a more formal process. For people, I noticed that we, you know, we do want to encourage people on special events, but we also want to make sure it's done responsibly and with consideration for all the things that we need to be thinking about, particularly when it moves on to a private property. Because one of the things that we're upping this is, we don't have special events as a list at use at any of our zoning districts, right? A lot of times these special events that occur on private property can refer in the county and the bigger properties, where they have maybe some unique features on those properties to accommodate like a wedding or some other type of special events. So when they move into the city of some of these smaller lives that have the parking lots and whatnot, it is a bit of a challenge for us to, you know, how do we do this? How do we manage these things? Is it something that we need to consider for all the different zoning districts or just the commercial ones and whatnot? So I think we should have a discussion on that as a staff and council. And I'm sure we need to work with the attorney as well to make sure that we're not missing anything. But I just wanted to let you know that that's something that's been rising up on our radar more recently as the summer, you know, moves through. And one of the other things we have is, Estacada also has a form for parades, which we thought was maybe useful. And so again, I think what you'll see probably over the next few months is staff preparing some of these documents and sharing them back with you for your input guidance. So we can try and get a better process in place for how we manage special events and get the word out to the public too, because we want to get these things submitted well in advance of their events, so we can address any concerns that the department, the police department or staff may have before they get going and they're not getting caught in the last moment, so.
So that, I mean, honestly, that sounds like a great idea. I guess one question I have before I turn to some of the council pages is, have we, have you received complaints? Or is it just something that has bubbled up that you saw where, hey, maybe we need to address it? Have you complaints about the special events?
That's, that's a good question. That might be a question for the whole staff to answer than just myself. I do believe periodically comments have come in, different staff members, about some of our special events and how they could manage. Myself, specifically this summer, in regards to some of the events that I've mentioned, I have not received a specific complaint.
So this is, sounds like something that could be very advantageous for us to look at and explore.
I, I think there's enough, I don't want to say concern, but there's enough interest at the staff level that we think we should address this, because we could see it welling up and getting away from us. And so we thought maybe we should try and address this now before it becomes a bigger problem where it's something, it's becoming a complaint-driven type of a situation, because we don't have a process. So it's trying to, you know, prevent that from happening. That's the approach that we're taking.
Councilor Page?
Very still put that next. I was asking, with these special events, are local businesses having a problem with it? I mean, it's hurting them. I just tried to figure out the timeline. I don't want to get into weeks or not, that's for certain good discussion. But the worst thing that's on my head is, are we impacting local businesses by having, say, a small farmer's market, as you've heard of? And that's just, that's just what I was concerned about. Something that's hurting someone now is just a nice initiative they could have.
Yeah, no, great question. You know, as far as what's happening over at the strip mall, I have not received a specific complaint from one of the other companies that they've had any conflict with it. I mean, I will give people a lot of credit that they do a lot of outreach interviews and that they also set their meetings towards the end of the business day or their events. They can start around 3. So there's only typically a couple hours, maybe, left in most of those businesses' workdays, so that could be some of it. They're, they're doing a good job on strategic timing their events. But again, I think one thing we're starting to see is, when you start closing down access points and internal circulation patterns and whatnot, and then you have some type of a potential emergency, that could preclude their ability to get there in time and now, because they might be coming from an access they're familiar with that's closed. And so we just want to try and coordinate that a little better. We, we think of, you know, Pete, that parking lot there is rather large. The Hitching Post and the neighborhood property has a rather large block that could probably support special events. The new food court area is fairly large that can support special events. And so we're just kind of thinking about those things. And then folks like to rent just mazes for, for special events as well. We don't really have a, we have a little bit of a process for that, but we think it could be made better as well. And so it's just trying to look at what other cities are doing, seeing if we're missing something and if we are, what we can do to try and improve upon that. and if we are, what we can do to try and improve upon that.
Great, I appreciate you being proactive. Dustin had some feedback.
I don't know if you need my microphone for that, but yes, sometimes it does affect public works for shutting down different roads. And of course, people have requested to rent the entire park for different events, and we don't have a process for that. Sometimes that requires to actually shut down different things. We don't have anything like that, and same with like the parade cops and stuff. It does deal with public safety and the public works and how the crew is also involved in setting up a lot of these matters as well. And so it's not just for private events, but it's for some of the public right of way that affects the staff as well.
Yeah, thank you, Dustin, and I appreciate that. And so to Dustin's point, this isn't coming from one particular department or one particular issue. It's just hearing things collectively and coming together in our monthly, in our weekly staff meetings and talking about this and us recognizing that we have an issue here. It's impacting public works, it impacts other folks, and so maybe we need to take a look at this. And that's really what spurred this effort on to try and take a deep dive into special events and what we can do to maybe make it a better process for everybody.
Thank you very much.
And before I turn it over to Rowan, I want to let you know this is something we've been working on for a while now, but we have our very first planning commission handbook done. It's all printed up, so we're pretty excited about this. We're going to be putting it out to the planning commission at their next meeting. They do have electronic copies of this, but there was a request to print them up. And so we printed up 22 copies, so we'll give seven out to the planning commission, only 15 in case the public might want a copy. Or if we get new members, we'll have some readily available to share with them. But I don't think this is going to get updated in the near future, so I think the first edition will be around for a couple of years, and we'll probably be able to use copies that we have. In addition to doing the handbook, we also printed up two documents that are available on the League of Oregon Cities website and the DLCE website that they put together to try and help the public better understand the land use process. So two of these are available in the library now for checkout if people would like to check them out or read them at the library. And then we'll also have them available at City Hall. I believe they'll be for purchase at the shop about that a little bit because there was an expense that we encouraged to get these printed up. But our former city manager saw this as being something that was very important and that we should make something like this available to the public in a printed format. So we printed these up as well. There's 15 of each, well, I should say 14 now because we gave one each to the library. But these will be in the lobby now for people if they'd like to purchase them as a hard copy. But we'll also make sure that they know they can just go online and get the same information. So pretty excited about these documents that are now being ready. And before I turn it over to Rowan, I just want to say thank you for a great year. It's been wonderful working with you. Rowan's rare year is coming to an end.
On that note, good evening, Mayor and councilors. And it is the end of an 11-month period that I've spent here in North Plains. Beginning of September of 2023, I came into North Plains, never having been to the city, being a lifelong Oregon resident, but not knowing much about this region. And I received an extremely warm welcome and have served nearly 1,700 hours of joy in this city. And part of that is due to you guys, amazing city council that supported the RARE program and believed in bringing in young people who were ambitious and wanting to help the city and the community who welcomed me and were enthusiastic about new ideas and new projects and things that could bring them together, bring color and beauty to the city, bring progress to the city. It has been an amazing time working with everyone. I've spoken to and worked with residents who have been here for mere weeks. I've spoken to and worked with residents who've been here for 90-plus years. Everyone has been an absolute delight. And I am thrilled to say that we've gotten projects done. We have a new downtown sign. We have accomplished many of our planning goals and worked towards more goals in the future, setting programs up that will continue for a long time. Our Ice Cream Social in June was a massive success and my personal highlight of the service year. Seeing this community come together in such numbers and enjoy, celebrate what we have here was heartwarming to a degree that I can't verbally express. So thank you. I am not going anywhere, fortunately, but I am really thankful to have served through the AmeriCorps and RARE program and been able to learn about the community in that way. With that said, a bit of what I have been doing, actual substantial work. The past month, we were considering a grant from ODOT through their carbon reduction program. And the funds from that program were designed for sustainable transportation. Did not end up being applicable for North Plains due to a scale issue, but it helped rise to a variety of other ODOT and associated agencies' programs for sustainable transportation, for developing our downtown, all goals that are important to the city. And I will be continuing to look at those options for what we can do to help people bike, walk, use EVs and micro mobility to get around the city, access our downtown, access our parks, and access our civic centers. If you have any questions about the RARE program and service here or what we're doing, please do ask.
Comments or questions? So, you know, Rowan, it's been a pleasure working with you this last year. I love your enthusiasm, your energy. I know you're not going anywhere then. I know you're going to take a break, but you're going to come back to us as a part-time, I mean, assistant planner. So I'm pretty excited that you're staying on and that we have space for you and a place for you here. I know that we could really use your, again, your enthusiasm and your knowledge, your expertise. So I'm pretty excited to, that you're going to stick around. So thank you, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm just, because I was here for both of our RARE volunteers. And so to work with that, Rowan went out and touched a lot of the community, just like Doug did. You know, when you bring these young people on, throw them out to the community to go do some of these things, you just never know what you're going to do when they come back, right? And I can just say from the downtown business community to the farming community, to Washington County, everybody has received our RARE volunteers wonderfully. And so I just want to thank everybody for doing that. I think that contributed to the experience that they had. And so I'm really glad to hear that and look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Bill, three years.
Good evening, council, and good evening everybody here. So while we're through this, you all had opportunity, my reports every month are pretty in-depth and get into maybe even more numbers than anybody wants to look at. But I will just summarize, the July report is always for the month, excuse me, for the year ending, June 30th. So all of the information in it is kind of a first cut, very preliminary idea of what the city did during the fiscal year, fiscal year that just ended. July 1 marks the beginning of each fiscal year, and we're now in fiscal year 2025. But as far as the main operating funds go, all three of them, and then Jesse Mase by it, but all three of the main operating funds, the general fund, the streets fund, the water fund, all of them are experienced expenditures, at least preliminary numbers through the end of the first fiscal year. We managed expenditures below budget for the first half of the biennium. The general fund's coming in right now at about, expenses about 93% of budget. I will say that we have been short-staffed in finance, and so there, we aren't completely up to date adding electronic transactions, so auto-paid utility bills, that sort of thing. So we're probably closer to, if everything, when everything gets recorded, all those kind of auto-payments, credit card transactions entered in there, we're probably closer to 95% of budget for the fiscal, 95% expenditures of 95% of budgeted for the fiscal year for the first half of the biennium. Of course, we have a lot of people who are, who don't normally come to meetings, so the city budget's on a biennial basis, so we actually kind of officially and legally track a budget for a two-year period. So we're just marking information here for the first half of that, the first year of the two-year biennial budget. I'll talk about property tax revenues in a little bit. But by and large, things are all below budget, and we are tracking expenses that for departments that have been a little more active for the, you know, kind of where they are and what they're doing. But for the two-year period and what we've budgeted, all of the departments of the general fund are below budget and we're tracking that. The streets fund, similarly, we haven't really initiated in the first year, we didn't initiate as many streets fund projects as we thought we would. So our expenditures are only 33% of budgeted, so FY25 will be a very active year for that fund. Meanwhile, revenues for the fund after the first year of the biennium came in at about 108% of what was expected. So growth in the community faster than we expected is fully reflected in those revenues. The water fund, similarly, is the 71%, after the one year of the biennium, the water fund is approximately 71% of budgeted expenditures after 12 months. Whereas revenues for the first 12 months for the water fund, whether that's usage fees, people paying for their monthly water bill, or whether that's connection fees when we have new homes built and people move in, or when someone sells a home and somebody new moves into that home or they buy it, there's always a new connection fee that happens, so that's revenue that's included too. And so through the first 12 months of the year, we're at 93% of revenues compared to what we had budgeted. Water fund is always, for anybody who doesn't get to come and listen to reports normally, water funds are, the water fund is always on the track because you have a lot of activity and a lot of revenue during the summer months because of water usage. And then during our winter months when it's wetter, revenues go down quite a bit each month. So it's a really sensible fund. But right now, after 12 months, we're at 93% of budgeted revenues. Jesse Mase has kind of been on hold for large rentals, but it's, its operations expenses continue to be higher than its rental revenue 12 months in. So I'll leave that there. The 12, excuse me, the July report also because it's the end of the, it's the first take on the end of the fiscal year, FY25, there's a recap for, as of the first four quarters of the biennium, there's a recap of our capital funds towards the end. So I give that normal quarterly recap for kind of the special, the project funds. Really, the big story over the last 12 months, of course, has been the Public Works building under construction on West Union Road. That project is basically, today, we spent about $4.43 million. And the state, of course, is kicking in a large share of that money, and we've gotten $2.74 million from that. And we'll get some more, a significant amount more funding from the state soon because the payment to the contractor in June was the single biggest payment we've made. And that will mean the single biggest refund request from the state. So stay tuned with that. But the Public Works building, of course, we're expecting it to be complete by December and to be able to kind of move folks and equipment into that building. But by then, construction is still expect, I believe is still expected to be wrapped or newly wrapped by then. The other big story, of course, with capital funds is 313th, it runs right by City Hall. They had a lot of major improvements to it, a new up-sized water pipe beneath the street was put in, and then the street was repaved and serviced. And then we have brand-new sidewalks going down much of 313th from City Hall towards Highway 26 South. And so now a lot more people can more safely walk to Veterans Park from City Hall or vice versa. But that project took a few months to get done. It's pretty much done now. And so the water fund has paid nearly $670,000 for that as budgeted. And the transportation SDC fund has been part of that project as well. So with that, that big project is just, is pretty much done there. So we're happy to see how that's turned out, and it's been great for folks to walk, bike, and then drive, of course. Those are kind of the most active things going on in the capital fund. So I'll just leave it, if you have any questions about any of that, please ask.
Counselor Page.
While we have such a big audience here, we started off our budgets and it's really exciting. But quickly, I wanted to bring up a few things. If you're inside the city limits and you pay your property taxes, only a smart portion of that actually comes to the city. A lot of us have an accounting there. Everybody has a school district, everybody has their, you know, closet. By the time they get to it's only, if you have a $5,000 bill, maybe $800 or something. And that is limited to only 3% a year legally that they actually raise debt. So if you look around, you have staff that is paid. They get more than 3% a year most times. So houses are always a loss a year. What helps drive the city is business. So the folks that don't live in town and not pay taxes, if it could support the local businesses, especially eateries, it's so hard to own a restaurant because tastes change. Please support those guys. That's the lifeline through the city a lot. Also, take gas rampings. You have a 3 cents per gallon gas tax, it helps build sidewalks, so it's not ditchism. In front of his house, he had curbs and sidewalks, which is a school safer. None of that's cheap, very expensive. We had a heavy way to pay for it. Money does not come from developers or, you know, guardian angels or any of that stuff. Comes from, it just comes, people go back and forth. So if you guys want to get involved in the budget meetings, we have a biannual. Reason why we have a biannual, because we set this every year, go over the entire budget and how much it can cost and know that every single year. So I do every twice a year, so it's biannual now. A little time statement. But folks, please support the businesses we can, gases, restaurants, whatever you can, right?
Counselor Page, I thought you were going to also include that there are two vacancies on the budget committee.
I also wrote down a little bit of that, thanks.
Great to get involved. Any other, Counselor Smith?
Yes, we did this budget a year ago. We do not put in there for renewed positions, and how does that fit with our budget? Could we, and plus the pie chart, and is there other uses that we can sit around and talk about? Like the parks department or whatever, of adding programs? Because their budget is basically zero, so how's this all fit together?
Counselor Smith, those are very good questions. So regarding the, I'll start with the public works positions that are on resolution tonight. Those two positions are employees we already have and have basically budgeted for. I do believe that there is an anticipated change to their pay. But in the scheme of where we are versus our budget, there, it's, there isn't, there are not increases that are looking to be a problem for how much has been budgeted, for personnel expense in our water fund, parks and rec, and how we pay for those positions. The resolutions before you tonight really just create new positions for those two to step into and define what those positions do. Because under Oregon budget law, you all have to also approve of the actual job descriptions that exist here as well. And normally, the budget process includes you adopting those things, but these are kind of inter-budget positions. The assistant planning position is really the only position you're hearing about tonight that is entirely new. And as far as funding it, we have, we have in the Urban Renewal Agency Fund, which of course is a little bit separate from the city, but still managed by the city city council, we had, we had budgeted for professional services for doing these kinds of activities, including the expectation that we would have a third year of a RARE volunteer we would be partly paying for. So I would say that this position is the one where we would be looking at the Urban Renewal Agency and step up a little bit more to help fund, but that's primarily where the funds would be coming from because there's a lot of downtown in Glencoe. commercial corridor work, and that's all the urban renewal district. So I, I guess the bottom line is with positions you heard about tonight, I wouldn't say that any of it comes out of nowhere. It is like one hundred percent expected or unexpected expense. I think though that I would just echo the, I would echo the concern, your question though, in that, you know, we have maintenance and other public works and parks under service, I think that we've acknowledged. And at least in the case of the two public works jobs where you're, that are before you tonight, that helps, helps to get at at least some of the unmet need for service that we have.
Another question is, if you're looking at hiring another half streets department, how's that fit in with all this? There should be a decision made on how we want to do this.
Counselor Smith, correct. So I, I agree. So what has happened is that, is that, I, I believe it was last month at city council, the chief in Washington County Sheriff's Office worked out the ability for the city to get point two F T Es more. And we worked out an arrangement and figured out how to, how to pay for that because we've had higher property tax revenue than we budgeted for. That was actually something I didn't get to in my report. But property tax revenues are up a little over ten percent above what we conservatively projected or expected. So we have the ability to take revenues that are unexpected and pay for more of the service that we have been conservative with because we didn't think we would have the revenues. So at least at roughly fifty, fifty-one percent of the pie chart in the budget, that's, that's a priority that was adopted. So that's where definitely some of those resources would go to that we didn't expect to get.
And I do, I believe we've had a conversation about that. We have, we did.
Yeah.
You, you may have been on vacation. Exactly.
For folks who know, at least that property cost is about a hundred dollars an hour. That's when the cost becomes an hour, that means they, you get charged a hundred dollars an hour. So any percentage of like a full-time employee that would be with this, is that a fixed cost? It goes about, it varies about every cent.
Thank you, Counselor Page. Yeah, for folks who are, who probably know, but you don't get to come to city council meetings quite so much. So you, we of course contract with Washington County Sheriff's Office to provide our law enforcement services. So we pay a, a contract for those services with the county. And then we have an allocated, chosen and determined allocated number of officers that work with a North Plains badge on it. And they, they, they work within the city a certain number of hours, a number of people every day and every week. So we just recently increased the amount of, of presence by officers because of the resources that have been generated.
Any other comments or questions for Bill?
I have one question in regards to the relationship in the T D T fund. And you made a note that it's been drawn down some because of the activities on North Appleby, which I would expect. Are we, I mean, that's, to me, it looks like it's about eight hundred eighty thousand. Are we expecting any more drawdown on that in this fiscal year?
Counselor Sheldon, great question. For fiscal year twenty-four, that just had to know. However, with, I believe it's phases four and five or three, four and five of Brenham, we should see a lot more drawdown of that. I don't know if it will get it down to zero. Everything that is remains to be built, there's some that remains to be built, of course, east of Maine. Not a lot at this point, but there is some. But then west of Main Street, the later phases of Brenham, yeah, that, all of that, we'll draw that out.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for because I was trying to understand the relationship between the numbers and what's been brought down and where we're at. So I, I think that's pretty important. Thank you.
Sure. I, I might add on the T D T fund. We're looking at putting before you all on August fifth agenda. I'll be working with Rob on this. But we do have a T D T installment. We, we, we kind of talked about this several weeks back. But the, the, the building on West Union, the industrial building that's been in the news with A S M L in it. They, they have chosen to have an installment plan for their transportation development tax, which is about over fifty-three. They're going to pay that over seven years. But that agreement has to come before you, so that will.
And just to confirm, they also will be responsible for property tax?
Yeah, that, that building is entirely responsible for property tax. There are no city or state exemptions that they're, they can get or, or believe they're, they're not interested in any. Even, even if they came to us and said, hey, could you look into this for us? They're not interested, so they'll pay property tax like everybody else.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions for Bill? All right. Thank you, everyone, for those in-depth reports. Great questions, great conversation. Now we're going to move on to our next set of our, our agenda. It's nine A, B and C. We have three resolutions to review. We had a few sneak peeks on those earlier. But it looks like the first one is resolution twenty-two seventy-three, creating the assistant planner position. And I'm going to turn this over to Rob Drake, our intern. Oh, and it's also with your speaking over to his manager, but first I'll start with you, Rob, just to.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill's going to take, take these on.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Your, your questions earlier gave me the, Counselor Smith's questions earlier gave me the opportunity to talk a little bit about these. But yeah, thank you. So resolution number twenty-two seventy-three, that's before you. Like I mentioned, under working budget law, anytime we, a city adds a new type of job, before we can begin to hire someone, we go through the process of hiring someone. City council has to approve the job description to exist. And it certainly needs to cost something within the adopted budget or some kind of conversation has to happen and it may be a supplemental budget if that position is identified as, as needed. But this, this resolution basically creates an assistant planner position. This, this type of position is extremely standard at other cities. It, it really, you have the detailed kind of description of what the job is and what it would do. But the bottom line is that for two years, as it says, for two years, the city has had a rare volunteer that, in effect, at low cost to us, because Washington County Visitors Bureau and Washington County itself, excuse me, Twelton Valley Visitors Bureau and Washington County have shared in the cost of funding a rare volunteer for two years. And, and the rare volunteers that we've had have basically been operating like an assistant planner. And so for two years, the city has moved forward on a number of different projects that have done a lot of good for the city. I mean, just, just scaling up the ice cream social alone, the amount of work that went into that alone and rather successfully, kind of just, that's, and that's just one thing. So this, so this that passed by city council would create an assistant planner position that would basically carry on and expand upon what the rare volunteer has been, the rare volunteer position. Or the rare volunteer we've had is not a position, but the volunteer we've had will do. We have a lot of work coming up, obviously, with looking at the U G B expansion, that they approved the downtown plan and a bunch of other things that we're going to be doing moving forward. At the very bottom, there is a pay scale that we went through the process of identifying would be appropriate for this position. And we took a look at a number of other cities FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five budgets to see what exactly they were needing this position elsewhere. And what we landed on is at the bottom, that's been for your consideration. And it really kind of is consistent with how we've landed on pay at North Plains. We're not a big city. We're not in a Portland metro U G B. So we, we don't have the ability to compensate similarly. But what we can do is take a look at what other smaller jurisdictions, not too far outside of Portland metro, U G B pay. Because there is definitely a pull. One way is a small city outside doesn't have the resources. But at the same time, we're a city, we have to do things that other cities do. And we do have to try to, relative, the best we can attract and keep people who can do those things for the city and keep it moving. So that's the pay scale at the bottom that we, we came to that's kind of went through that methodology for an assistant planner. Beyond that, I guess I would just stand for questions, but, but that's basically what's before you.
Counselor Paven.
Thank you for the overview, Bill. My question was, once this position or if this position were to be approved by council tonight, how long would the job posting be up for?
That is a great question, Counselor Paven. I am not making the hiring decision. I am not sure. I'm, I'm just bringing it from the one yard lineup to you all consider for, for approval. I mean, normally when, when we do an open recruitment, we do it for four weeks. I don't know what this process, I'm not, that's not my review. But normally when the city does a hiring process, it's a open process, it's a four-week application process.
Thank you. And, and the reason why I'm asking and I want to, again, I just want to echo Rowan. I want to say thank you so much for everything you've done for our city. And it just kind of made the wheels in my head turn a little bit when I heard, you know, you're not leaving, you're coming back. And I just want to make sure we're fair, we're following a fair and equitable career progression and opening this up to other applicants as well and finding, you know, the candidate who's the best student for the position and not, you know, have a perceived shoe-in candidate. And I'm not saying that would be wrong in this case by any means, but I just want to make sure, you know, if approved tonight, that there's a clear timeline and, and clear understanding with staff of this is an open position with a, you know, a definitive end posting date and all qualified candidates have been interviewed. Is that something that, that has been discussed or maybe this is a question of Steve, the hiring manager?
I will defer, yeah, I mean, I'll defer to Steve on the, on the hiring part. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, so just a, just a quick overview. You know, I was just sharing that Rowan has done a phenomenal job and I, I could absolutely see Rowan in this, in this next role as assistant planner. But tonight, if, you know, council passes and we create this position, I heard maybe mentioned earlier that Rowan would be coming back to North Plains. And I just want to make sure we're opening up the position for all applicants to apply and follow fair and equitable hiring process. Is that something that's on your radar or, you know, I just don't want it to be a perceived shoe-in, right? So are we opening this, this position up to all candidates to apply? And if so, how long would that be open for?
You know, at this time, and it could change, it could change in anybody's direction, obviously. But the, the reason to create the position was we saw a person who was worthy of that role, who we had in our midst already. And so we did try to craft this position to retain Rowan. If the city council or the city manager or somebody else decided that before that becomes official, we wanted to go through some type of process to, that I would advise them. They, they would have to let them know that it's not the intent when this was, when this resolution was put together. It was specifically put together because we had an asset that was too valuable to let them.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. And I, you know, I, I think that maybe this is a good dialogue for, for this body to have as well. I know some of the work the last year that staff has done with creating the play handbook. I think that might be something valuable to, to review in the future of how are we being fair and equitable with our hiring practices? Do we have a, a default, you know, timeline of how long all job postings are open for? Because I absolutely hear you and I, I absolutely am aligned that, you know, Rowan is a great asset. I don't want to lose Rowan. But I also just think through, and then, you know, inclusive lengths as well and being fair and equitable with our hiring practices.
Sure, sure. And I, I will add to the position. I know what it's supposed to be, that's an assistant planner position. For those that don't understand the profession, it really is the first way. And when you come into a planning department, a local jurisdiction, and you've never been a planner anywhere before, that's the starting point. That's kind of the, the jump off point for anybody getting into the career. Rowan's a bit unique though, because Rowan has helped in so many other things. Rowan's helped with public works. Rowan's helped with economic development when they're downtown. And so Rowan's been a hybrid, kind of a Swiss army knife type of a employee for the city. And it would be very hard to find another person that could probably have the, the background and the skills that, that Rowan has and her ability, their ability to, to help us in so many different areas. You know, one of the things that Rowan brings to the city that might be hard to find in another public thing is Rowan has firsthand experience with what it's like to be a business owner or a small community running a restaurant. And so I think Rowan has a perspective of what it's like to work in our downtown and some of the tribes and traditions that has been in our space. And so that's something that we felt was uniquely valuable to Rowan. And, and Rowan has found a really strong ability to, to communicate with the public and really help us in, in ways that maybe we didn't know when, when they first came here, you know. That, again, was just something that we just felt we couldn't pass it up.
Absolutely. Again, I, I wanted to say this as delicately as possible, that, that Rowan is a phenomenal asset to the, to the city. I think just my, my only cause of this is I want to make sure that we are being fair and equitable. And maybe this, this is a good discussion as well for the group. Because I know, I'm just one, you know, one opinion on the board, but I, I do want to make sure we're setting a precedent for future positions as well.
Sure. No, I appreciate the question, but I think you're right. And at this point, it might be a discussion among the council. But I just wanted to share with you where we were coming from and why we saw this as being a little bit urgent in the moment because Rowan's time is now.
Thank you. I am personally going to abstain from the vote because I had conversations with Steve about the position. So this really is your discussion at this point.
Well, I have a big comment. That comment is this authority does not lie with us. All we're doing is creating a position. It's up to the city manager to make the decision about the hiring practice. That's not our role. We're policymakers. We're not here to decide who gets hired and who doesn't get hired and how that's done. We have a process for that. That's the role of the city manager. And as far as I'm concerned, it's aside from what this resolution states in writing in its effect.
Thank you. And I, I would, I would agree with you to a certain point, Counselor Sheldon. I think just looking through some of the past feedback from previous, you know, city manager reviews and staff reports that as a city, we have an opportunity with diversity, inclusion. And that's really the lens I'm looking through for this, for this decision-making value.
Any other comments or questions?
I, again, I'm trying to be, I don't want to talk about any individual candidate here. But I do want to echo my concern about making a job just for a person. We should have a job opening and put it out to the best candidate.
So is the decision, Counselor Sheldon?
Yeah, I'm going to move approval of resolution number two-two-seven-three, your resolution, city of North Plains, Oregon, creating an assistant planner position.
I will say.
Any, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Fair enough? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Obstention. As I said before, it will be abstained.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you need a roll call?
I do not.
All right. All right, thank you. Resolution number two two seven four is creating two public works positions. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution two two seven four. Before you talked a little briefly about it earlier, but. If approved by city council, we would be creating two new job descriptions. A lead operation, a lead operations technician and a water distribution lead. Unfortunately, we weren't able to to have the work session to. Heard the content of that would be the conversation about. Beginning the process of expanding services to the city by putting two people who have demonstrated. Strong employment record here and service delivery in the public works department. And kind of setting them into a a formal, kind of more supervisory related role. One related to the water system and one related to everything else, basically, the public works does. But right now, we just kind of have job descriptions for. General crew. There's some seniority in there, but we don't really kind of have. These supervisor roles. The city used to have an operations supervisor position filled by somebody who's a member of the city. But the job description was kind of very generalist. And the intent here with this resolution is to create these two different, more formal supervisory roles regarding. Those two different kind of mainstreams of what public works does. They would be promotions for existing employees because they're kind of already doing that. But this would kind of move them formally into that. And give the ability for the city manager or public works director to move forward with with those promotions in a formal way. There is additional, the, there is additional, I believe. We are using the base scale that we kind of already determined for the most part for the the supervisor role already exists. So there isn't anything different in there. The budget includes two years of that individual's salary. They're no longer here. So as far as the impact upon the budget of promoting these two individuals into these two newly created positions. We've passed, we've passed, passed several ones of the fiscal year and not spent money on that person at that higher salary level. So the bottom line is that. We don't know, and we probably won't be pushed into supplemental budget territory by the creation of these higher paying positions. Because we've been underspending on personnel because of how things have changed. So we'll track it and we'll let you know, but we don't anticipate any. Fiscal burden, I guess, for lack of a better term. When promotions were to happen. But this this resolution just creates those two job positions to begin the process.
Questions, Councilman Finge?
How many people will, this is for supervising positions. How many people are they going to supervise? Is it like two people only to be supervisor?
I'll talk about it. First director, so I can't spit this out immediately. Oh, my gosh, there's Dustin looking, coming up the microphone. I will let him get in there.
My apologies. Can you repeat the question once again?
For leads and for leads. Generally, we have a lead, you have a manager, and a manager leads some people. And there's a limit. To what your scope can do. So you have leads that take over the the lower ranks. We have a good chain to, if you didn't control. I was wondering, with these leads you're having, how many staff will they be leading?
So this was something that I was going to originally go over in the work session and my overall long range plan of where the direction of the department is going. The operations supervisor position that was in effect basically wasn't a supervisor position. If there was no. Let's say, what's the word I'm looking for? They weren't doing any reviews or anything. There was no direct supervision per se. And so these positions are more or less the same level that was with that previous position. But they're more, it's more of a foreman position. So foreman or lead are kind of the same kind of things. As far as a supervisor or a manager position, that is a position that I would love to provide in the future. But we do not have the ability at this point, funding wise, to be able to do that. And one of the things that the water distribution lead position is is potentially with. New personnel in the future within the next few years as we determine what positions are needed, like like seasonal positions. Between the two positions, they will kind of share the workers. And so it it's kind of a quasi formal, it's it's not a true supervisor position. That's why there are leads. They are leads in their field and and what they actually, their technical proficiency. And that's kind of more along the lines with what I was, I was getting at in in that sense. They have some quasi supervisor. Things that they can do. Ultimately, I am the supervising authority that is writing the reviews and everything until we eventually get an actual leader supervisor or manager position. So what I'm doing with these positions is basically building a framework. And a way up for these guys to potentially maybe one of them become a manager one of these days. If so, because there's a lot of experience within the city that they, that it's in-house experience that it's it's hard to get from an outside perspective. And so that's kind of my idea for all this. And that's something that we can do in a future work session.
Yeah, it sounds like, yeah, we need to go over the big picture and see how it all falls. We have a retention thing, just to display a title and motion or?
Right now, it's retention. I'm already, it's. One position is possibly, I'm I'm possibly going to be losing another position in the future. Due to personal reasons and and personal advancement in that sense. So I'm already trying to deal with retention with the crew that I already have. And so I'm I'm working with a lot of things here.
Kendall, does you have a question?
Excuse me, I want to tread lightly here, but it it also, outside looking in. It feels like retention and I fully recognize that because I know, I know what a struggle it has been in the economy. To staff, especially for for our city. But I'm going to echo my my previous concerns from the last, the last position that. This doesn't feel, someone's got it right with me, but it feels, and maybe Chris, maybe you can, you can chime in, but. You know, thinking about, is this equitable that we're creating positions to promote someone into? And not opening them for other qualified candidates to apply and go through that heavy process. And then ultimately Dustin makes the hiring decision of who the best qualified candidate is.
Couple of things. One, I don't know what's, I'm probably not the best person to judge what's equitable or what's not, because I have very strong opinions that tend to. Be the odds with others. And then I can tell you there's nothing illegal about it. I can also then tell you that it's not uncommon. When you identify a strong qualified candidate that you want to retain, you make sure you have a place. So there's nothing illegal about it. It's not really that uncommon. Equitable, that's for you to decide.
I mean, that's, that's very sure. And again, I I I want to tread lightly because I know, I know all the things, I can only imagine all the things that you're balancing. And I'm just thinking out of, from a city perspective and. And I I I will support this, but I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you.
Comments or questions? Counselor Sheldon and then Counselor Kimmer?
My questions were the thirteenth, whereas, we do, we do need to correct the thirteenth, whereas refers to. A new seasonal library program assistant. That's technical error, but it's fixed in the resolution adopted. Otherwise, I support the resolution.
Counselor Kim, did you have a question or comments?
Nothing outside of Dustin. The lead mercenary got for the water. That person that is running that now is flying range, my man. And he studied very hard. Did that because that new water system, drainage system is. Really technical, right? And he studied for that.
It is a hard position to fill.
Hard to fill a lot of responsibilities.
Correct.
I think there were about six months I never saw him, but I studied. And then he studied again. The test is to see how you can do with it. He passed on that flying cover, so it felt a responsibility, really proud of him. It's five years ago, he had no job. And what I've seen, it's a huge improvement. This is really what I call a benefit for what he's, what he's put in. With Dustin's, you know, wanting him to get those. So thank you, Dustin, for helping you with that. I think that's great. So I see a big improvement, you know. Very good morning. He's got a lot of things on his mind. And he doesn't share that with me. Comes home, he's happy. So I think things are good. And the other one, I don't, don't too much.
Let's go to the counter.
Without reservation, I move for adoption of resolution number two two seven four. Resolution is to be in North Plains, Oregon, creating. Two public works department positions, lead operations technician and a water distribution lead.
Go to the second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. I would like to say I'm promoting on this salary.
Sorry. On the position.
Position.
Creation of the positions. All right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Abstentions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dustin. All right, next up is resolution twenty two seventy five, implementing a surplus property policy. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. So twenty two seventy five before you would basically create a. A property surplus, a surplus property or property surplusing policy. The city has long, and when I got here, the equipment for the public works department, the crew made everything they could of it. Growth hadn't really exploded. And the amount of new service and 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 work that the public works department really just took off. And that did require, you know, expanding equipment and expanding vehicles. And as we've grown, we get into a situation where we have equipment potentially before long vehicles that we will need to try to surplus for different reasons. Sell and runs over into replacement, that sort of thing. We just don't have a policy for it. We don't have a method, a methodology or policy for it to follow, to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. We don't lose money on it. We kind of get it out to bid or sell it appropriately on Oregon bias system or. What would be appropriate for that type of equipment or vehicle. So if passed, this resolution would just. Would create a new surplus property policy that we could kind of follow as we move into new territory with more. And different equipment, vehicles over time.
Great. Maybe Counselor Kendall will remember this, but I do remember years and years and years ago. We would have surplus and it would just come up as a discussion and this will vote. So. Moving forward and actually having a policy in place is refreshing. So certainly, thank you. I appreciate that work. Any comments?
It'd be fun to do that for like the dry sale. You know, much of stuff out there says, hey, I have a truck for forty bucks.
We take a dollar?
You know, yeah, that kind of stuff. That would be fun. I don't know. Sounds like a good, great idea. But I do not want to, I want to make sure that it's public and. It's not just like, you know, hey. Can I buy this little truck? Yeah, sure, take it, you know. I want to make sure it's. Very open to raise a chance.
I think it's pretty standard too. A lot of municipalities who across the state, they have policy or a surplus property policy. So. Again, we're moving forward and creating it. So that's great. Any comment, additional comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move with adoption of resolution number two two seven five.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Who was the second on that?
Counselor Payton.
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you. And ten, no unfinished business at this point. That's on our agenda. And diving right in now to eleven A, which is new business, is the UGB expansion relook proposed approach. So I'm going to turn this over to Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'll be brief on this. You have a document which was prepared after. By three J, Steve Faust, the partner, and that was done after an extensive discussion with him. Between the finance director, the community development director and myself. And we took that initiative because of providing, direction being provided by the city council. To us to move forward with a proposed change to and. Bringing back a different program on boundary expansion than the one the voters did soundly reject. The council heard the message and, you know, I would say introspection. And what we have tried to do is provide a document that. Opens up the process to whomever wants to come in and participate. The council will hear from all folks. It will be well advertised and depending if the council provides any additional direction tonight to what's being proposed. We'll come back on August fifth with a resolution in support and any tweaks to the draft policy. And we're recommending adding a few new positions to the advisory committee. So that it would include folks who might have been opposed to the first one. And preferably to residents. And maybe a couple potential future property owners who can provide, that would be contiguous to the city. And this is an initial recommendation. The council may have a different viewpoint. If so. We'll incorporate that. But the process is intended to be open, to be transparent. Invite folks in and to hear what others have to say. And it can't make it any more simple than that. With that, Mayor, if there are any questions or any additional comments. And Steve Faust is on the line virtually tonight. And so he will help answer questions and. Move us to some potential resolution hopefully tonight. So we can come back at the next meeting and. Give us a document that'll be like waving the flag for a race and, you know, we go.
Thank you, Rob. Where is Steve? There, Steve. So you provided the technical memo and I'm super grateful. Thank you. And I would like for you to maybe take some time and walk us through that. Get you to a speaker view position so that we can see you.
Can you, can you, can you say something, Steve, so we can?
Steve, can you unmute Steve Faust?
Yes.
Trying to get you up on the screen here, repeating someone else. I'm not sure why.
Is this helping?
There you are. We'll take that. Thank you.
And just give me one second to, my computer's a little slow to pull up the document, but could you repeat, repeat, please, Mayor, what you'd like me to do?
Yeah, certainly. Steve, so I just wanted to thank you for providing this technical memo for us. Yeah, certainly. Steve, so I just wanted to thank you for providing this technical memo for us to attend this evening. And at this time, I'd like for you maybe to walk us through what this, what this memo is saying. And then hopefully take some questions and input from council.
Okay, understood. As the interim city manager said, I spoke with several folks and understood that what they would like to see is a public process to take another look at the urban growth boundary expansion. That was recommended by city council in, I believe, September of twenty twenty three. So I think the, the one thing that we recognized first and foremost was that education and communications was what we needed upfront. So we really designed this process to focus on that. You know, starting at the very beginning, as, as you know, Mayor Linehan, I've been working, you know, on different projects for the city of North Plains since about twenty sixteen is when we started this work. And there's been a lot of projects and process over the years. And we thought it was important to bring all that information together in one place. So we wanted to start with, you know, putting that down on paper, but also having a first community meeting where we present that information to the best of our abilities. And then really open, open, open the mics up, kind of like you did tonight with public testimony to have people reflect on the information, reflect the proposal that you're considering for the first time tonight. So our, the relook process and, and really just take all that information in. So that's, that's round one, essentially. I guess I will say in addition to that public meeting, what we want to do is since we know that we're not going to get everyone in the community in one room in one evening, also work with city staff to go out to community groups to the best of our abilities and, you know, get on their agendas, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce or you know, fraternal groups, you know, whatever the case may be, we want to get out there and spread the word as far and as wide as possible. I, one thing I'll, I'll note is that I heard several comments about notification tonight and we can certainly, you know, work with you to set a note, you know, typically a city notifies, you know, everyone within the city on, on a typical planning project or everyone within a certain distance from an affected property. We can certainly look at that proposed urban growth boundary, that recommendation that city council passed and, and go beyond that is what I think we're hearing. And I don't know what distance beyond that study area will, will want to go, but that's something we can work with you on. And then I believe Lori talked a lot about other ways that the city notifies folks. Project website that listserv will have a variety of means for, and, and, you know, just like we've always done, have a variety of means for people to access that information. So that first round is really focused on, you know, education and communication and awareness. The second round, we want to revisit the boundary itself. In a number of communities, we've done mapping exercises, mapping activities where folks sit in small groups around maps with some guidelines provided by us as to, you know, not guidelines as much as considerations, things for them to think about when discussing with their friends or neighbors, other residents, how, what, you know, what they would, might like to see or what they think makes sense in terms of an urban growth boundary or urban growth boundary expansion. We'll take all of that information. We have a process by which we can digitize, digitize all of those maps and prepare some composite maps, you know, to look at what the, the majority of residents are saying. And, and essentially what we would want to do is create a few alternatives to bring back to the community in our third round. That third round, we'd have a couple, two or three alternatives for people to consider. They wouldn't have to vote on, you know, you wouldn't have to vote on A, B, or C. What we'd be looking for is what people like or don't like about those three alternatives. And then what we would do is just bring that information to, to, to planning commission and city council. We would say, hey, through this public process, these different alternatives were generated. And here's what our advisory committee said about them. Sorry. The interim city manager mentioned the advisory committee and maybe expanding that group a little bit. And we would bring their recommendation to you along with what, you know, kind of the raw results of what we heard from the community for you all to make a decision. So kind of propose three rounds of community engagement before we go into the decision making process.
Well, we have a lot of people here. The UGB expansion was put it on as kind of like, it was great, you know. We should expand until I move here, then after that, no more people. I mean, that's, I mean, if I had voted for that, I did. Do you want neighbors and more people? The answer is always no, right? This farmland that isn't growing food, but it's still, farmland could grow food, it has that application to it. So if you jump behind that, do we actually need to grow? Can we just say, no, we don't want any neighbors? But with Hillsborough, go that spot that's open for anybody to go on. Yes, the roads out of our control are, that's just a look. But what, why are we in here? Why do you do this discussion? Why do we have to do this? And if you don't do it, will it be Hillsborough, you know, arrogant, ten thousand, they get, I think, they have to do stuff. And they'll land borders, Hillsborough as well, right? So how does this look for the big picture? Most of you here just don't want more people though. That's the way it is. Once, once they move here, we're done, right?
Or just representing what we have said.
But I'm thinking, I'm trying to generalize it.
Not correct. That's not right.
I don't want to move. I mean, it's only three, one people are.
That's not what we're saying.
So let's do.
I was very clear.
Do we need to have people here? I mean, do we, do, I'm sorry, do we need to have a UGB? Is, what is the process for this? And why are we doing this now?
So I think what I'm hearing, it's a little hard for me to hear, but your question is, you know, do we, does the city have to do anything? I, I guess is, is your question. Can, can the city just do nothing? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Two questions. One, can the city do nothing? And if it can do nothing, could Hillsborough win the area or what, what does that look like?
Okay, well, there's, there's, there are, and, and I think we have, you know, information from the state that can probably put it in better words than I can, but there are different requirements for cities of different sizes. That said, the, the state encourages, kind of like Mayor Linehan said earlier, the state encourages communities to plan for the future. So larger cities are required to plan for twenty years of growth. And that's a practice that many cities throughout the state of all sizes undertake, right? Planning for that twenty years of growth and, and the tools that are used to do that are the economic opportunities analysis and the housing needs, needs analysis. And that kind of tells you what your land need is going to be to accommodate growth over a twenty year period. So a little bit of nuance in your question in terms of what does, you know, what is North Plains required to do? One thing that we don't have total clarity on yet at this point, like my understanding has always been that the city is required to accommodate the, the growth, the housing growth identified in the housing needs analysis, but not necessarily all of the growth for employment needs. I think we still need a finer point in clarification from the state on that. But again, there are different requirements for smaller cities than there are for larger cities. And I, I, I think Rob might want to say something here, but before you do, I'll just also note that currently the state is going through the Oregon housing needs analysis process where they're kind of rewriting the rules about how we plan for housing in our communities. And so, you know, changes are coming down the line a little bit here as well.
Rob, I'm going to let you jump in here.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think what Steve has said is really relevant and I want the public to understand. I'm here as interim city manager. I probably won't be with you next calendar year. Not applying for the job. I did retire two years ago. And because Mayor Linehan called and because I could see the need with Andy leaving, I was happy to devote six months to do this, but I truly don't have an axe to grind here. I've been through annexation wars, happiness, sadness with it, watched a lot of it and had a second career for thirty years managing cities. This is my third city in Washington County. The first two was a combined twenty seven years. And so I, I don't come quickly and then just go. And I've watched North Plains grow. Some of your elected officials I've known for some time. But in all candor, and I've shared this with all the council, if not all, some of the council, I thought it was an awfully big bite with all due respect, going from where the city currently is to what was really maybe misunderstood too about how far out in the horizon it was. But I think what Counselor Fage is asking is a good question. But objectively, again, no axe to grind. I'm not going to invest in property here. I'm not going to own a business. It's a nice community you have, but you could probably put, keep, keeping it relatively small and put some polish on it. Have a few conveniences that maybe you don't have. And I'm looking at it from the pure perspective of being a more complete community, a better community. And you have some limitations based on Hillsborough being in metro on the south side of the highway. North side of the highway, you're an independent city, so to speak. And I just think that, and I, I was asked to make a recommendation. I think you can do some growing, but gracefully and hearing people's opinions. And I favor hearing from everybody, both within the city and without. I suppose if we hear from somebody from some country in Africa, I might be a little suspect, but the, the point being that there are a lot of people that could provide input that might be helpful, it might not. But I don't sense from this council that they want to lock the door at all. It may have just been the approach. And yesterday was yesterday and I think you have a lot going here for North Plains. You have a staff that works really hard, is very effective. The city has been well managed. Staff responds when somebody calls. There are a lot of good things going on in North Plains and your city council is active and interested. But I, I don't think anyone knows how big should North Plains get. I will commend North Plains. I have a business background and some of you work for Intel, they wouldn't have gotten as far as they have without good common sense business practice. And the smart cities in Oregon do involve their residents. And they do open the door for people to participate. And I think that's, that's what's going on here. And I think your leaders would be foolish to not plan, but they want to plan and they want to hear what you have to say. Maybe some won't like everything that's going on, but I think there's an earnest effort here to make this a family process and not just somebody dictating what's going on. So that's my two cents worth, but I think what Steve has said is true. I appreciate Counselor Fage's concern. But I think there's opportunity here. You don't have to drive to Hillsborough and buy your groceries or out to gyms or in other parts of Hillsborough. You could, you could have a choice here.
Rob, I very, very appreciate those comments. And I also appreciate your history, extensive history over the years and experience over the years. You mentioned something about, you know, we want to be, we've been transparent, we've been open about this process for the last, for years. And we, you know, I recognize that the bite was big and folks didn't like it. But I think what we want to do with this process that's been laid out with us tonight is to have a little more discussion. I'd like to hear from each counselor on what they think about this and what they would like to see different or add to whatever. But I also want to make sure that when we look at the qualification, or not the qualifications, it's not the right word, but we had an existing PAC made up of community members, business members, technical staff from DLCD to ODOT to Washington County. And we had agricultural community here. We had Westside Economic Alliance here. We have planning commissioners, city councillors, academic people here, businesses here. So I, I think one thing that you mentioned, Rob, was to definitely keeping that door open and making sure that we have people on this pack that represent all viewpoints. And one conversation that I had with Rob was like, what would that look like? You know, like, how would we, you know, choose maybe two people out of the community to be a part of this PAC? I, I don't know what that looks like. And I'm hoping that we can have that conversation here tonight to say, what is this PAC going to look like in the future? We would like to take the existing PAC and offer these positions to the existing PAC. When I say existing PAC, this is the PAC that was formed years ago that started with the first UGB expansion and see if they want to do it, if they want to participate and be members on this group to try to find a, a solution. And then in addition, we do want to make sure that we include folks who want to have a say in this. And again, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if we have to like call thousand friends and say, hey, can you identify two people? Call North Plains smart earth people, hey, can you identify two people? Like what that might look like? And looking at businesses too is kind of the same breath. So with that said, I really would like to hear from you all, what your thoughts on what that is going to look like? And then also your comments on this process.
I think we need to get the deposition on board to participate because clearly they weren't heard or participate or whatever or something. If you have more people involved, that'd be better. So I don't know how it's going to look, but we do need to include maybe sort of again, give everybody some time to measure.
I kind of bottomed the, I wasn't sure how that would look either, but I support obviously the community engagement, adding folks to the PAC. You know, adding however many more residents, outside residents, but maybe it looks something like an interest form or, you know, someone that is very interested and, you know, can bring their ideas and articulate them to the table. So maybe like something, someone applies for one of our boards or something like that of being able to sign in and buy people that way.
It'd be kind of tough too. The people that we're expanding to, they want to, they want to, they want it to happen, right? So we want to say, okay, we have eight people, this half, half and half. The people that want to sell, I mean, they want, they want to be let out of land, there we go. So they're, we want to make sure they have now like them, but other people also.
Good, good point. I would definitely encourage to possibly two randomers in the existing proposed study area, being a part of the group as well.
Absolutely. The folks that are.
Yeah, their voices will be growing as a part of this, folks who maybe initially opposed the UGB.
Well, I certainly support going forward and I certainly support a rollback. A commonsensical rollback, not an entire rollback. It's not going to be a zero growth plan, no growth. I just don't support that. That's not good for our city. And this is a boundary. Not an expansion into the boundary immediately. So we're talking about a process that starts after we set a boundary. So, yeah. So yeah, perhaps a smaller boundary, the process about cutting the folks in who feel like they were cut out, that's fine, I don't really wanna hear from people from Portland and beyond, I don't think it's necessary. Perhaps people that are in the surrounding farmland adjacent to that, I'm okay with that. Some of those folks have been hurt, and I'm somewhat sympathetic to some of their comments and their position. However, we have no other ground than farmland to grow on. So maybe we were a bit too ambitious to begin with, that's potentially something I can admit to. But I think we have to be protective about our community, because we have Hillsborough approaching us from the south. And if you don't think they're not gonna go to the legislature soon and advocate for everything to the north, you'd be mistaken, because that's the path of their own. I want us to maintain our identity and to have surrounding land for us to grow into the future. That's the vision I have for North Plains, I've been out here since nineteen ninety-six. So as far as what we need to be doing, yes, we can take more comment engagement here. But this, you know, there's, there's been this notion that somehow, we didn't make notice. Well, we had one notice, I think, in twenty-six some meetings, that, that it was noticed, it might not have been properly noticed, maybe in a paper or a statement circulation, but that doesn't mean nobody knew about it. So, you know, I'm interested in hearing from folks. Yeah, we need to roll back, I think there's, there's a way to do that. We have, we have a potential planning grant at risk. So that's part of the reason why we need to move forward expediently. That doesn't mean we have to dismiss folks' voices. So along those lines, I, I think we need to move forward on that basis. And I think honestly, we've, we've heard the voters who voted inside of town, although forty-three percent of those votes didn't participate. So, you know, is that a task of approval by them? Maybe, maybe not, maybe you can assign the same weight to those votes, we don't know that. They haven't shown up here, they haven't come here. The collective typically that's been here has been folks who aren't residents. Or maybe not, maybe they're farther out, so reaching out certainly isn't gonna hurt anything.
Don't worry, that'll be changed.
So what do some of you think about the process that's laid out by three J? And we're still gonna have community engagement at every step of the way, right? And so just because if a PAC is identified, it's just a, a body that will, you know, basically sit around the table and, and help guide some of the conversation, but these are going to be public meetings, and we are going to be asking folks to participate in forums and so on and so forth. So I think it's, I think it's really important to, to make sure that we understand that, and we give staff clear guidance tonight on how to move forward.
Well, I'm looking here says, remember December to make a decision. I'm thinking ask people to put everything together like we should. The audience agreed. Anyway, putting the, the groups together, who decides? I think Smart Growth can nominate two or three people. I guess there are two from the farming district, but we need to have some, some way to figure out who's gonna be on these committees.
So, okay, I heard you say two from the North Plains Smart Growth group?
No, two or three, they can nominate, you know, what I'm kind of worried about, some of, some of, not all, but there's the comments, comments on Facebook and stuff, saying the city council's corrupt and stuff. I really don't want that type of person, I want somebody that wants to really work at the city council. Not, not the ones on the power hand.
We have, we have rules that are about filibusterism, like, you know, we're supposed to make things better, we're having, because we do have to, we do have to make progress, right?
Are you comfortable with having two landowners within the proposed UGB area?
We already have one.
Yeah, we should probably have all of them inside the UGB.
On the PAC, I'm trying to get us to a point where we can say, these are the folks or the groups that we want on the PAC. Everybody's gonna be a participant in the, in the, in the conversation, right? But I would like for us to be able to say, okay, this is what the makeup of our PAC looks like, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can you remind me how many members made up the original PAC? Um, Steve, I'm just looking at an old email, trying to decipher that, I think. Or Bill, would you know that number?
I can find it if you just give me one second here.
And I, I think the reason why, I'm, my, kind of my thought process for this is, you know, what's the sweet spot for member, PAC members? What was the criteria before, I'm a little rusty on that before, I think it was two community members at large, maybe two counselors. And I'm just trying to think about how do we expand upon that and include, include a more diverse population, including those outside of the city limits, those that might be with, you know, immediate UGB proposals. And then kind of go from there. I think the only question mark I have, and I wish I had a better solution, is how do we, how do we find subjective ground to, to elect someone to a PAC, right? I don't think it's something that any one person is the best suited for. But that's my, that's kind of my, my next part of my thought process of how, how do we comprise the PAC? And who, who determines who's on the PAC?
If, if I made it as a practical matter, last time there were a couple of people that, representatives that are important to have on the PAC. Keep in mind, Washington County has to also amend its comprehensive plan to reflect the new, any amendments there in the boundary. So we included people from the Washington County planning staff to get their input, to make sure they were up to speed with what the city was doing. Then both decisions would have to be approved by the planning and space development commission, so we included persons from DLCD as well, to get their input, make sure they were up to speed. So that's at least a couple of organizations, you wanna make sure to include one or two people there, from each of those, to make sure that those organizations are up to speed with what the city's doing, and that they're on board.
And we also had, like, ODOT.
Yes.
Was on, we had one person on ODOT.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. One thought could be to use December as the check-in point. And if you're not ready to, you don't have enough information, and there needs to be some massaging, make December a, the jump-off point that, yeah, things have gone really well the last four months. We still think we need to do X, and if you need to leap into the new year, if you've made progress, you're with tracks in the snow, so to speak, then, then you know you're on track. And then at that point, maybe depending on what's happened, hold the committee and the public and people who come, because you will be breaking into groups, and see if it's making the kind of progress that you would hope. And you say, well, this needs another three months, two months, four months, whatever, to get to some kind of yes, or another jump-off point. But four years is a long time, if some are thinking that, you're gonna go past deadlines on population makeup. You're gonna launch yourself into some other, maybe some required additional studies that need to be done. And I think, I think ODOT is going, is working now toward releasing those funds. We had a very productive discussion this past week, and we got some assistance on getting to the right people. And you control the timeline, but leaving it open forever, I think it's unwise. But if people work hard, roll up their sleeves, and you can do those check-in points, you're gonna find out whether you're, there's a goal line in mind, or you're starting to see mirages in front of you, and they're not telling you what you're really seeing. So you, you can, you can massage that too.
I remember there was a lot of, a lot of duties involved, funding and whatnots, and studies come down, and studies expire, and there's always the state trying to give us more dense housing, always kind of make rules for that, so we kind of wanted to get ahead of that a little bit. I mean, having kind of heads up of the next round of people making it harder for us to
When, when is the legislature adjourned?
I know, but do we, do we have any, you know, is it about that? I mean, we had some funding from the, from the state that, I think so, had it, like, it's just costing a lot of money.
Rob, you just went to that?
Yeah, and we got a strong sense that ODOT is having Department of Justice putting this in line. This was approved once, but we explained what we were proposing to the council tonight, and I think there was a collective sigh of relief from the ODOT, ODOT staff we talked to. And I, I think there's a clearer vision, and the first round was what it was. You could spend all day on that, or say it's time to move forward. And there's a different plan being proposed for you to embrace for the public to participate.
Question, Mayor, Rob, you think six months would be well more than ample time to get this done?
I, I think so.
I'd like to see it done in six months, I don't think people will get tired of coming to meetings and all that. They wanna get, get it in, get it done, and move on, I mean, if you're interested, let's get the program going.
And if there's a robust notification process, and people don't have to give their license at the door, explain where they're from, but they're welcomed, and people participate in a sincere way. It sounds like Nirvana, but I think it could be done. Washington County is very unique when it comes to places that work together and try and get things done. We're often the envy of other parts of the state, how do you guys do it? Why, why do you get along? Because people want to, I think.
So how many people are we talking, I mean, a group, what, you know, we have this group here, would it be like that or less? I mean, I'm trying to get my hands, hit around this group.
Steve, did you, did you find maybe the number of folks that were on the last PAC?
I did, it's thirteen, I can, you know, some of those are North Plains folks, and, and as was said, some of them are agency representatives. I would just recommend, you know, once you get past seventeen for a committee like that, it starts to become a little difficult to, for, to give everyone an opportunity to speak and have meaningful participation. I think I've done one with nineteen before, that, that went okay, but that's really pushing the, the upper limits of what you'd want on an advisory committee.
So in looking at that list, as far as agencies that are on that list, I, I've got on my list Washington County, ODOT, and DLCD. Are there any other agency members that were on the previous PAC?
The only other agency I have here is Washington County Housing. I can't remember how often that person participated in meetings, that's the only other agency that you didn't mention.
And the agency just there to make sure they're represented, or do they actively participate?
They actively participate, I think one of the, I mean, they're, they're regulators, right? So they're helping us make sure that the work we do fits within the, the regulations and, and the law, so. And that we do good quality planning, so.
We needed that technical guidance, yeah.
That's for them, right?
Two, I believe you mentioned, Chris, you mentioned two from Washington County. I don't know if that included, just, I'm trying to think if it was, yeah, I don't remember who it was, right? Aaron and
There's LUT, was at least one, Housing was two, there might have been a third.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a good chance that there would be three, Washington County, one ODOT, and one DLCD. Two, three, and then five, so there's five.
So we have five who were
And I wanna say, I think, let's see, I was on there, planning commissioners were on there, a couple of planning commissioners, couple of business owners, and I, I don't think that we had
There was an ECD rep.
An ECD, an ECD rep, thanks.
What does that mean?
Economic Development Board, the commission that we have.
I can read the whole list if you'd like, if you, that would be helpful.
Yes.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Yes, please, Steve.
Okay, we had Charlie Hopewell from Jewett Cameron, Eric Lawson from the Economic Development Committee, Stuart King, Planning Commission Chair, Terry Lenahan, Mayor, Lonnie Knodel, Planning Commissioner, Doug Noonencamp, Planning Commissioner and Parks Board Chair, and Laura Kelly, who is the Regional Representative from DLCD, Kevin Young, who is the, the Goal fourteen, or the Urbanization Specialist from DLCD, Jessica Pels from Washington County, Glenn Boland from ODOT. We had another person from ODOT, but I think that was because one or the two of them couldn't always make it. Her name was Kate Hawkins. Mike Holm from Oregon, Canadian. And Shannon Wilson was the, the Washington County Housing Representative.
So if ECD business, so we had two business owners in town. Or something is here, so we had three Washington County, one ODOT. It sounds like two DLCD members. So really, that's six, so if we're gonna shoot for twelve or thirteen.
Probably turn out some of his officials.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're having this conversation. So would we, do we wanna look at, I don't, you guys, please, I don't wanna give you, put this in your head, I love your feedback. So what, Steve, would you like to see on this committee? So if we have six technical advisory people, and maybe we're shooting for a twelve or a thirteen member group, well, according to Steve, I don't want, I mean, I, fourteen, maybe fifteen. If we're looking at that, right? Think about the, the positions that we have in the city with our boards and commissions, and then think about residents, think about, you know, folks that, landowners, right? In the UGB study area, and then maybe think, you know, folks from North Plains Smart Growth.
So can we just have the officials just there as officiating? Without, without participating, I can't, there are questions we ask you. Because we have twelve people and, or more, and they also be just not, you're not gonna get much done in a meeting with like twenty people. Can we have the rules set up, the rules set up where they participate, but they're there to answer questions? Instead of being the participants, since we have people that actually matter?
So what do you propose? Effective meeting, like sixteen or less, to where everyone has, you have equal representation to the committee that's there.
So, so I'm hearing sixteen is the right thing, I think that's So ten?
I go less than twelve.
Now, we have six.
So, so all the comments need to be on the record, we, we can't have this back and forth.
So it really, you want this body, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we should do 10 people without the officials. With the officials, it'd be 16.
So then we would be looking for, I'm going to say, landowners within the UGB.
Yes, I'd like to see a couple landowners, a couple maybe outside of town. And.
When you say outside of town.
Outside of our city proper and then a couple residents.
Okay, so two inside, two residents within the city limits. Two folks within a 97133 zip code. Okay, so that would basically be an unincorporated area, right?
Yep.
Okay, so with the six technical, I'm up to 12. And then what about boards and commissions down there? That's what I think. What's that look like?
Do we have four spots left, though, right? I'm, I'm just thinking like city council, planning commission, economic development, maybe parks is first. And then what does that bring us up to? What does that bring us up to for the number?
So we have one council, one ECD, one parks and one planning commission. So, so we're at 12 or 16.
And you can double the planning commissioner to be one of that one?
Sorry.
Sorry. I would recommend one more. Then we can figure out somebody from chamber of business. We don't have anybody.
We don't have, we don't have business owners.
What?
We don't have business owners on this list.
Yeah, so at least you have one or. Chairman Carter maybe.
So I'm, I'm going to say maybe one person from 97133, unincorporated area. And we should have one business owner on there too. Does that sound?
How many, how many? How many do we have within the city limits?
Besides the four ECD.
Yeah, so like community members. How many do we have?
I have two.
I'm just trying to think, think through how to still create space for community members at large outside of North Plains proper, because that's where we've gotten overwhelming response feedback from. And so I'm just trying to think through how can we, what can we take from to still create that space? Can you just maybe start from the top of what you have and I'll just capture my notes?
So, great Washington County. My ears are going off. I have Karen May and Stan. Someone's calling me and so I'm sorry. Washington County. ODOT, one. DLCD, two. Business owner, one. Two landowners within the UGB study area. Two residents. One resident with a 97133 zip code. So basically unincorporated area. And then you have one council, one ECD, one parks and one planning commission.
I think 16 is good now. It's, it's getting up there, but it's unimaginable.
Well, the business owner could also be a resident.
Right.
So.
Yeah, correct. Maybe that should be the specification that they are a resident.
It's important to have resident representation. I have, like, you know, I have a lot of, I agree with that. And it doesn't mean that everybody, I mean, everyone else can still come and participate in the conversation or provide feedback and questions.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
But we need to have a guideline for the pack.
How you thought that was going to share this thing? What's an important issue?
Steve, so would you be facilitating, you and staff would be facilitating this? I believe you, 3J Consulting facilitated the last.
We did. We didn't have a chair or vice chair. Yeah, we facilitated the, the committee.
Everyone's unequal for the union, yeah.
Just for everybody that's going to be participating, 3J is number for free. So more time to do some workouts.
But there are technical folks who need that.
This is, this is another question, by the way. Okay, so you put this back together. So all these people want to come in and listen. I think that they will not be able to participate, but this is what the committee is doing. Is that correct? They can listen, but if you can't have everybody talking, you'll never get anything done. I did that 20 some years ago with that small cities thing. We had this room full of attorneys and if everybody wanted to talk, nobody dreamed it. There was, it was a jumble, jumble, jumble. So I don't want to see that happen here. I want something really productive.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would suggest that as part of what the description of what the meeting should be or condition of the deal, just exactly what was said. You prescribe at least a minimum amount of time and so that people can come in and just talk about some idea they may have or respond to what was discussed at a previous meeting. That way, you don't have to handpick what meeting I'm going to go to because it's the only night to take testimony. The whole idea is to try and leave it open. So you have to have some order. But you can have order and still have, if you have two hour meetings, why not at least up to 30 minutes approximately for comment and input? So if you can't come to other meetings or somebody else has been coming on your behalf and you show up, you can still participate and be heard. Now, it may not be taken, the advice, but that way you can either turn something in to back up what you're saying verbally or just talk and say, I've been thinking about this and I think that's a bad direction or I think that's a good direction. That way people aren't stifled with not the feeling that, gosh, if I don't get to that one meeting at the very end, I'm, I'm left out.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but didn't we take public conversation, public testimony or had public comment during the last process, during the last pack?
We did. We had time for public comment and then I just also, you know, we'll have multiple avenues for people to provide their comments. There won't just be the meetings. Well, you know, we can, I don't know if it was in the proposal there, but we can have some online companion pieces as well to allow people to answer the same questions that are answered during the meetings. But, you know, via web tools, whether that's a, an online questionnaire or an online mapping exercise.
You did indicate that there would be like online questionnaires and, and it would be interactive for folks to be able to participate virtually or online prior to the meeting. You did indicate that.
Great, great.
So are we all feeling good about the makeup of the pack? What other action, I guess, do we need to take in order to move this forward?
Should we make up timelines now for the first check-in point and try and keep it short? Or should we wait until the party gets going?
I, I think, yeah, I, I think maybe from this discussion, Steve and Bill and Rob can have a conversation and bring it back. I think at our next August meeting to kind of firm that up.
Okay.
Councilor Peter.
And how will we determine who is on the pack?
How would you like to do that?
Good question.
Our question?
Rob?
People, one suggestion I have is if people, for the most part, could accept back some that were on, we can do the phoning and ask them if they'd be willing to serve again. Or I think there are members here who weren't crazy or residents, people in the community who weren't crazy about their results. They might have some ideas about the additional people that were talked about. I mean, I, I, my advice is we're going to be open. We should be open. Some may like the suggestions, some may not, but if X group or X organization wants to put somebody in that spot and recommend it, I think, I think they should do that. And see if what pack members may want to come back. There might not be as many as, as we might hope. That was a long serve and maybe they said, well, I did my job and there'll be others for people to recommend.
So we'll leave it to staff to do some calling on existing, with previous pack members, communicate with business owners, you know, landlords and see, I mean, landowners and see who they want, who wants to participate in that. Which, and then you'd be able to bring that back to us in the fall for the next meeting in August. Would that work? Does that sound?
I think, I, I totally hear you and I want to be respectful of, of not adding too much workload on the staff. But I think my only pause with that is just having to make sure that's not biased, right? And how do we make it, again, a fair and equitable process for everyone? So, and I don't have an answer or a solution for you. That's why I'm kind of talking out loud through this. But how do we, how do we create a pack, maybe with defaulting is what I, what I'm maybe hearing is defaulting to asking previous pack members if they would like to join? Is that correct?
I think that was where to start with, to see if they would be interested. They can certainly call, I, I mean, I would like to give it to staff and let staff maybe make that determination around them. And they're supposed to be the unbiased group.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, we're just lucky to have people show up.
Totally hear you. And I, and I'm just, I'm just thinking through, again, like building trust with the community and getting that, that feedback. And again, I, I feel bad because I don't have a solution to present this body tonight. But I'm just thinking, how do we make it an application process? You know, nomination and application process without adding on even more to the timeline and more workload. But Rob, maybe you have some best practices from previous times with your other transitions.
Candor, I, I don't know that I have a best practice, but my hope is folks will react positively to what they may have heard tonight or what they can hear on a recording. And invite folks back if they want, but with a mind to diversity and equity and inclusion. I mean, the, the door's open and just, I haven't worked with all of you ever or previous to the last two months. But I sense you have a strong sense of fair play and you support having the group as broad as can be. Whether we, we're asking a lot with a small number of people, but I think we can mostly accommodate that. And I can't think of the other two staff members and myself that I'm going to have a bias. And I don't think they would about someone that would be invited in. If you ask us, instruct us to make it a diverse group and not single people out for whatever reason, that's what we'll do. I've worked long enough with these folks and known some of them longer, but they just want a good process. And I think it'll help pull the community together. I've shared with the mayor how thrilled I was at how happy people were at the ice cream social. I mean, I, I don't know if I've ever seen such a happy group of folks that day. Not that they got a lot of ice cream and it was almost uncomfortably warm, but, but the camaraderie out there, especially after the vote, to me was really encouraging. I mean, no, nobody knew who I was. I was just listening and watching and serving ice cream. And folks were really happy to be there. And I, I think personally, there's, there's a salvation here to get to where everybody wants to go. And I thought people might be cranky and there wasn't a single cranky person that came to those tables that I saw.
I think, I think we should deal with the staff and decide. We have a random city manager and he's a short timer. So I think he's pretty fair. And 3J is, that's what we do for the evening, right? So, okay, I think yes. I think that's our bias. I'm going to do that.
I'm going to, if we want to take a consensus, we'll vote if we need a consensus for the council.
I also want to be respectful. It was a really late night. I think, again, I'm just thinking worst case scenario, right? This is our time to rebuild trust with the community, to get the input. And I'm just thinking, given this process and, you know, six months a year from now, we look back and maybe there were gaps or holes in capturing that feedback from the community. And where would the blame be placed? Could it be placed with city staff, right, for selecting this pack? And I know that's a very worst case scenario, but I'm just trying to think how do we make it bulletproof and, you know, check the boxes so that everyone feels included. I, I'm not, personally, I don't feel like we're checking the boxes if staff is hand-selecting pack numbers. And I, and I'm open to discussion, but I, I just want to just throw out double advocate in the other side of this equation. But I, I feel like there could be risks of having someone.
So, so they would, they would, in my mind, looking at this list, they would talk to the planning commission and say, okay, who from the, I'm just starting from the bottom up. But who from the planning commission would want to be on this, okay? Who on the parks would want to be on this? Who on ECD would want to be on this? Who from council would want to be on this, okay? They have access to the landowners in the UGB study area, right? And they can put it out to all of them there. And hopefully get feedback and say, you know, maybe this person does or that person does. And then maybe one landowner, for example, says, I, I just want to participate. And maybe we only have one landowner that wants to participate, right? And although we've identified we want to, then we should know that at the next meeting. And then maybe we can help say, hey, maybe we should open that to someone else, another resident. Or, you know, maybe someone else on 97133. I mean, we could certainly talk through that. The, what else did we see? The staff, the technical staff is really kind of a, it's out of our hands, right?
Yeah.
They are who they are. So really it would be staff asking each one of the boards and commissions. I would imagine that most of the people in this room and folks online and after, I think I would agree with Rob in that they're going to hear this, they're going to listen to this, they're probably going to email, hopefully email them tomorrow or maybe in the next couple of days, talk to their folks and say, man, I'm interested, I'm interested, I'm interested. Maybe if we do have three or four or five folks that are interested, you know, maybe we should then bring it back on August and say, you know, and chat with them. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, but I'm hearing you and trying to, I'm just trying to problem, you know, just kind of brainstorm right now, right? And, but I, but the givens to me are technical staff has said, counselors and, you know, the boards and commissions, that's pretty there. And it really would be a business owner, two landowners, two residents and one in 97133.
Absolutely. And I'm aligned with you. Yes, we know some of those are a given, right? We have to create those spaces for Washington County, et cetera, et cetera. But could we create a Google Doc for people to apply it and check a box of like, this is the community I'm not visiting, you know, outside 97133 or this is, you know, a link on the website to apply and help staff sort through and, you know. I don't know. I'm just trying to think about how to, how to make that process instead of just a phone call of like, oh, we've identified you in this area.
Yeah, my, my comment is like, if everybody, a lot of people apply, my comment is how do you verify that? Some bias that you have like 50 people applying, right? That's what is a bit hard, right? So I think that, I don't know, it's going to be.
But it's, but to that point though, it's at least a limited. but it's about point though, it's at least eliminating the bias, the perceived bias of staff.
No, but.
Yeah, that's really hard.
It, you know, um, I, I'll let you come up, okay? And, um, again, name address for the record, but, um, if you, yeah, if you can help, yeah.
What you said, uh, Mayor, and about having someone who has clearly been level-headed and put a lot of effort into this, I think we could ask for leaders who clearly are committed, um, from the, um, Smart Growth Group, ask Aaron Nichols first and then second whoever, I don't know the name of the woman who's in charge of CPOA, but they both have put a tremendous amount of effort forth and are identified with the, with the Smart Growth Team. Because if you pick people who haven't put their work in, who haven't shown a level of commitment and who aren't identified as leaders of this group, they're gonna look like sellouts, even if it's me. And I love to be the person because I love doing this work. But I know who are identified as leaders of the Smart Growth, and you do too. All of you know that. Two of them need to be on this committee.
We've identified two residents. And, um, you know, can there be two residents from the Smart Growth to be on this committee?
Right.
And I, Aaron Nichols is Hillsborough and CPOA leader is in the nine seven one three three zip code, as far as I know, right?
So that takes two places.
Well, but he's, 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 we didn't, he's not, um, a part of our criteria.
Oh, okay.
Aaron is not a part of our criteria, okay?
I'll do it.
I'm just saying, I'm sorry, Katie, we're not recognizing this time.
Okay.
Um, Joey?
Do you want me to finish?
Yeah, please finish.
I'm sorry that Aaron Nichols isn't, is it considered? Um, I know there are other farmers who make their living farming in the outskirts in nine seven one three three. And, um, some of us don't make any money farming, so, you know, we don't feel like we could say we're farmers. But there are a lot of us who are very interested in being active in this. I just think it's important probably to go to a thousand friends of Oregon and to the Smart Growth people and ask for them to put someone forward. Because if you don't, you're not recognizing the bodies you're dealing with. These are very large groups of people who put a tremendous amount of work in and they want to see this, it will go well. If it's just someone like me who just has opinions and can bear being in very long meetings better than others, that's not going to show that you have listened to the leadership of those groups.
Aaron's not a nice one, do you read?
No, it's not.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm close to the
I didn't understand, you're sorry, I couldn't see.
But. But I.
But he's the recognized leader of the group and he has represented us.
But isn't there somebody from the group that lives in the city? For example, Katie Redding is in this office, in this audience, and she was the lead for, for the, the organization, um, the resident. So, I mean, she's in nine seven one three three and she lives here and she has spoken out against it and uh, she's a resident and she would fit the criteria
Right.
that we laid out. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
I think that would be important to hear her voice. Aaron, no offense, I've heard your voice enough, but I haven't heard her voice, right? And I think most of us up here could probably say the same thing.
Right.
If she could do that and you find somebody else in the North Plains resident, in North Plains resident, who's also a part of the leadership group, and I would trust that Aaron and the others could probably find somebody else to companion with Katie to be on this pack.
I think that's a great idea.
Then that would fit our criteria and then we would just need one other person with a nine seven one three three zip code, which would be you, right? So, uh, that's what we're saying. And if you want to, it's late. You know, think on it tonight, tomorrow, the next day.
I may.
Reach out to Rob
Okay.
and say, you know, here's who we would like to present for this, for this, um, this pack. That would be super helpful.
Awesome.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now I feel relieved at this.
Okay.
Katie, can you do it?
I can't.
Okay.
So you'll have to have a conversation.
Yeah.
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 Just have a conversation and then get back to Rob, okay? If that would be helpful.
Mayor Littingan, I know it's late, we have a landowner, uh, to comment.
Yeah, Chris Edmonds.
Possible, thank you.
Chris Edmonds for the record, and I ju- I just want to commit that, uh, uh, if, uh, it would be helpful to the city, uh, the east side property owners, uh, would be happy to caucus together uh, and nominate somebody who could represent the interests for, uh, all of, of those approximately, uh, four hundred fifty, five hundred acres, uh, that are under consideration on the east side.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Sure about that?
Sounds good.
I've got thumbs up. I don't know if the council can have any.
I'm gonna defer and let, let the rest of the council speak before I make my, my final thoughts.
I'm supporting the plan.
You got a chance to let people, even though you have a chance to, that's important, guys. I mean, we're just up here trying to do our best. Recently, we had a February sixth AM, so I need the repower, so thank you for, uh, stepping up.
Thank you, um, Counselor Piven. I just, I, I mean, I'm on board, Counselor Sheldon. Really, it's, um, your voice. I mean, I think I can, I think we can all see what the group consensus is and I, I'm gonna support the consensus. I think, uh, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not holding any bias. I appreciate community members coming forward and speaking and, um, I know, I don't want to hit a record here for how long a city council meeting has gone, but I just want to say, appreciate everyone's effort here.
Well, I think this is a testament to our commitment to wanting to do the right thing. Um, I think this is a testament. Consensus? Uh, thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
All right. So, next then? Thank you all, thank you all so much. The next agenda item, uh, for, yeah, it really is. Um, uh, city manager report. Council reports. So if city manager report and council reports can be very brief, that would be tremendous. Um, do you have anything? I, I, I'm good. Do you have anything that you want to share for, yeah, city manager report? No, okay. Counselors?
Have you ever looked at, have you ever looked at the, uh, at the, uh, this one right over there? The Hops?
Why don't you look into that and get back to us? And, um, uh, Steve, thank you for your time, um, really appreciated, and everyone online, um, and, um, Katie Miller, if you would like to email me or email Rob or your thoughts or a question, um, that would be really helpful, okay? Thank you all. Any other counselors? Questions, input, reports, okay? Um, so I'm gonna take a five-minute break and then we're gonna go into executive session and executive session is based on O R S one nine two point six six zero two H. Uh, it's a legal counsel, a legal counsel there and the city council. And at that time, at this time, I'm going to, um, ask everyone in the city hall, I mean, in Jesse May's, to, uh, be for the evening, but thank you, Elaine, for your participation and, um, working through this process with us. And thank you online too.
Yes. Ten forty-seven P M.
Thank you. The city council will now meet in executive session under O R S one nine two dot zeros, or dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff, and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occurred during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end.
Thank you, Lori. I'm gonna go and turn this over to Rob and.
Um, I'm gonna go ahead and close the executive session at eleven forty-five, come back into regular session and I'll go ahead and close the company at eleven forty-five.